Good evening, uh, for October twelfth. Uh, to remind you, as usual, we're being recorded. Uh, just to make you aware of that. Secondly, we have a rather robust agenda this evening. It may be a very long evening. If you were here for just one or two items. After you leave, uh, please try not to have a live discussion outside. As we want to continue the meeting as swiftly as we can. As we move to the agenda. If you are here for the entire evening, welcome aboard. It could be an enjoyable evening. Uh, first item is, um. Snack Trail Estates, Division of Subdivision. This is a continued public hearing. Uh, is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
How are you, sir?
I'm very good. Dan American with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. At the last meeting, the fire department. Asked, uh, if we could take a look at their ladder truck turning template and make sure that the cul-de-sac can accommodate it. They provided that to us and we found that it's your standard requirement is just a touch too small. Um, if we increase the page radius of the cul-de-sac by one foot, it will accommodate the fire truck. So. We're asking that if you could include that as a condition of approval, that we reflect that minor change on the adored plan.
Okay.
And that would, that would take care of that.
Okay.
And that was included in your packet as their condition, adding that one foot. Um, and I, I believe I even said that. Um, so there is a copy of that decision in.
Any other items from the board point of view? Uh, fire department, you're comfortable at this point?
Yes.
So we'll first need to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion. We accept the high draft decision. As a federal draft decision is written, I will need a second. So. The motion of Florida accepted federal draft decision. There's some seconding. Uh, any discussion? I'd like to call for the vote. Uh, by name, all in favor?
Ben's eye.
Brian eye.
Bill eye.
Bill eye.
Nick eye.
That motion passed, he's in the answer. Um, we need, we need to sign the decision.
That is correct. That's, and we can sign that at the end of the meeting. And then at that point, I'll file the town clerk, which then we have twenty days for anybody to appeal that. And, um, you do need to close the hearing. If there's no comments from the public.
Uh, we're entertaining a motion to close the public hearing. We have discussion on closing the public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Ben's eye.
Brian eye.
Bill eye.
Bill eye.
Nick eye.
That motion passed.
And we'll sign at the end of the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if we can take the next item out of the agenda in order?
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Um, we could possibly do quickly Bellingham. Bellingham shores, they have some lot releases.
Sure.
Um, we do have the paperwork from the DPW in regards to the bond that's been set. We have that provided along with the additional lots that are to be released, which is lots twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two. Thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and ninety-six. Um, all the paperwork has been provided. I believe Steve O'Connell is on Zoom. Um, if you'd like to speak with him quickly.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
How are you, sir?
Great. Good evening, uh, board members. Thank you for having me.
Uh, just to be transparent, he and I are not related. Uh, so tell us what's happening right now.
We're making excellent progress. We're just proceeding, uh, you know, through the subdivision, the lots are being, uh, houses are being built on the lots in order. Uh, paving for, uh. The, the second half of phase three and phase four was completed. Uh, therefore we're here look, looking for lot releases and things are moving, uh, rather quickly. Sales are supporting the construction, the pace of construction. And, uh, as far as I'm concerned, this is one of the best run jobs, uh, I've been a part of.
Well, thank you. Um, do we need a motion to accept a performance bond?
Um, that's, that's already been set. You can certainly do that, but we, we have it. Um, I think your motion should include the lots that are being released.
You, uh, outlined the lots again, please.
Sure. We have lots twenty-five, twenty-six, actually it's twenty-five through thirty-nine and ninety-six.
I entertain a motion to release those lots. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I call for the vote.
Ben's eye.
Brian eye.
Bill eye.
Bill eye.
Nick eye.
Okay, we'll sign that paperwork after the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Connell, thank you. Uh, Amy, can you bring us up the gate on, uh? One eighty-six, um. Fellow project discussion on Maple Street.
Okay, um, certainly. Yes, sure. There was a, um, basically last month or a month and a half ago, we went out to site to just address some of the maintenance issues on site. Um, there was a broken fence that's been replaced. By the applicant along with providing maintenance. Um, of the, the yard area. They just needed to do some cleanup to the. The fence area and the mowing around the site, and that was taken care of. They had to fix some signs. Um, and the only thing they're addressing right now will be with the Conservation Commission in regards to. Um, how to address one day invasive species. That was on site. Um, the email that you have from Hannah. Is in your packet in regards to what the commission is planning on doing moving forward.
All right. And we just got the, uh, the gate.
No.
And should we bring them into discussion down the road?
That's up to the board, whatever the board sees fit with that.
Uh, at one point it was a condition. I know you had mentioned it.
Yeah, I, I, I do think, um, the gate is an important consideration. We spent a considerable amount of time discussing and planning and talking about a gate. And I know that it was way into the process, but I would like to see if there's an opportunity to get the gate backed up and. At least have a discussion.
Okay.
Do you want me to have them come in at the next meeting? Do you want them to zoom in? How, how would you like me to proceed with?
I, I think we can do it, uh, off meeting, just outreach out to them. In terms of the discussion of the game.
Okay.
And then we can have them, uh, come in at the subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Where we have the, uh, not as robust an agenda.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe we have documented patient on the decision outlining, outlining this. I'd like to move on to, um. Maple Street LLC Development, uh, Plan Approval. This is heavily parcel three. This is a continued public hearing. I want to let you know, as we said at our last meeting. The board is the receipt of a cleaning and downtowns. That is regarding the applicant's state of use variant. From the zoning board of appeals. For this. We're going to continue our process. And when they see the opinion from the zoning board of appeal. Um. I'd like the applicant to step forward and tell us what is happening right now. How are you, sir?
How do you do? Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Peter Brown, uh, from Brown Legal. Along with me is Daniel Server, Director of Real Estate for Next Grid. And we have floor engineering, Greg DeBona here for parcel three, in order to sell parcel. And John Cusick from Baller Engineering here for parcel one on the north parcel, when we, when we get to that. The first thing I'd like to do in terms of a, uh, status update and how to proceed, this is applicable to both. The north parcel and the south parcel. We wanted to address, uh, a number of questions and comments that keep in the public in. Uh, the last, the last couple of meetings. And so this is a, a statement of mine regarding the south of golf course. I'll be brief. But I think it's important for the public to, uh, understand exactly where this project and where this property stands. Uh, I want to be very clear for the public. That the permitting of this project is not about a choice between a solar project. On the Franklin side of the property and the golf course continuing to operate. The property is being sold. Period. That decision was made on September twenty-first, twenty nineteen. The fact that the property was up for sale. And that the property owner was looking for the best price and best project is not a secret. Meetings were held with the administration in Franklin and Bellingham. Over the years. There was a residential deal with Toll Brothers. Bellingham did not want it. There were industrial opportunities. The owner sought out solar. The owner sought out a solar company with an excellent reputation. And the owner entered into a purchase and sale agreement with this solar company, Next Grid. Prior to this deal, numerous businesses, entities and individuals have had the opportunity to try and buy the property. Lastly, I want to be very clear about the ownership of the property. Something that has not been in dispute at all since these applications were filed. And which is expressly documented on the application submitted. The owner of the property is a trust called Maple Gate Realty Trust. Sally Winters is the trustee of that trust. That trust is what is referred to as a nominee trust. That means it takes directions from another person or entity. That entity is Maple Gate Realty Associates. And that entity is controlled by Sally's mother, Shirley. The other interest holders in Maple Gate Realty Associates do not get a say. But they are Shirley's children. And that's Sally, that's Julie and Michael French. I represent Shirley, Sally and Julie. And I have done so for the past five years. Michael French is represented by his own lawyer that is also based in Boston. All of them have reviewed the purchase and sale agreement with this solar company and consented to it. Michael's attorney reviewed it, made changes to it, and has been kept up to date on the permitting and the sale. Michael's attorney consented to the standard language. In our sale agreement with the buyer, that the seller number one would cooperate with the permitting and the sale. Two, would not interfere with any permitting of the project. And three, would not support. Would not provide support to any opposition to the permitting of the project. In the months that the permitting has been underway. Neither Michael nor his attorney have submitted anything to Franklin or Bellingham contesting the authority of the owner. And the applicant to have submitted the application, nor have they contested any of our permitting requests. Many statements and innuendos that have been thrown around about the family. Are flat out wrong. I'm not saying the board has made any of those. But more importantly, what I want the board and the public to hear is they are hurtful. I therefore implore the board to keep the public conversation tonight and going forward. Focused on the merits and substance of the application and the legitimate areas of review by the board. I appreciate the leeway that you've given me tonight in addressing this point, and I hope we can all move on from it. And I, I have a copy of that that I'll submit as part of the record to you.
That's helpful and thank you for the clarification.
I appreciate. Moving, moving, moving on to the, uh, to the next point. Is we did receive, uh, the verbal opinion at the last meeting, which, uh, the chair has alluded to. Prior to the start of this, we do have a submission that we're going to make to the board that I'm sure the board will review. Um, with its own town council. Um, not going to ask to engage in a legal debate over those issues. You'll review it and look at it and get whatever opinion and analysis. You need, um, in response. We obviously disagree with respect to what was heard and to no surprise, lawyers don't always, uh, agree. But I do want to just highlight, uh, for the board, the, the reasons why we disagree, we'll submit it, then you'll be able to go and submit it out to town council and get your own. Uh, get your own, get your own input. Essentially what we heard from the oral opinion that we received, the written opinion. Uh, has been kept by the board as turn client privilege, which is the board's prerogative. But the two issues that we heard was number one. Whether or not the town of Bellingham can require, uh, the applicant to go get a use variance before the zoning board of appeals. And the opinion was yes, uh, yes, they can. The second part of the opinion is what effect does that have, if any? On this board and the application before you on both the north parcels and the south parcels. And the oral opinion was very clear that it does not have an effect. That this process is reviewed on its own merits, on, on the criteria that is in your own zoning, and that if this board decides. That it agrees with the opinion that it has received and wants to attach a condition to its approval, it can go forward and do that. But, uh, that is separate from what is before the board. Um, so we, I identify that in the various statements that were made in respect, with respect to the video. I just like to briefly highlight why we have a respectful disagreement with the opinion that you received. Number one, we look at the property that was just described. The LMP property at one eighty-six Maple Street. That property was approved. And underwent development. And it was in suburban zoning, exactly like our property, which is in suburban zoning. That property did not have to go get a use variance. And that property was subject to litigation in the land court represented by your town council. Where it said, and there's a court filing which we attached to our documents, that. It doesn't under, need to undergo further review because of the Dover amendment as we have, uh, gone and alleged. And so we believe the view that's being advanced here. Is treating another property in the same district, subject to the same zoning, subject to the same rules. Uh, differently, and that is, um. We bring that out. So that's, that's, that's one point.
Can I make a comment on that? Just to clarify something.
Sure.
So that, um, that use for that, uh, for a solar project was submitted and it got grandfathered before the zone change. It wasn't industrial.
Then, so, I, so we, we attach here in the court filing as well as in the year, a decision. It approved it as suburban in the decision itself. It confirmed in the land court it was being reviewed and approved under suburban.
It was submitted under industrial, that's all I'm saying. They had grandfathered, they submitted prior to the, the town meeting.
So, what we, what we attach here, and I, I understand. What actually, what was filed in the land court is on record at the registry of deeds. Is that the grandfathering was not approved, that was subject to the litigation. They dropped that litigation. They went through suburban. It was approved as suburban and approved as suburban without a variance and without further approval. Because expressly it says in the court filing is subject to the Dover amendment. But if that, that case does have a history, and, uh, like I said, about, I would give it to you. So that's fine. That's, that was one reason. The second reason.
Appreciate your input.
The second, the, the second reason that we say too is a case that was done at a town in Northbridge. Also represented by the same town council that, that you have. And in that particular case, the town made the exact same argument that's being made here, that a use variance is required. And, uh, that argument was rejected by Chief Justice Piper, uh, in the case, and the judge said. Plaintiff, you need not apply for a use variance. Because the purpose and effect of the relevant protective language of forty-eight section three is to override prohibitions on use. Unless they are justified based on necessity to protect public health, safety or welfare, and that constitutes a legislative override. Of what would otherwise be the applicable variant standard. So that case was litigated in the land court, same argument. Uh, same ruling by the court. The third is we talk about the SJC decision and tracer by Realty. We obviously have a respectful disagreement as between council. Uh, the fourth is a case that was relied upon where a special permit was allowed. And that was the PLH case versus the town of Ware, and that seems to be the basis of why we can go and be directed for a use variance. But in that case, we point out how the appeals court and the, and the, and the land court was very careful to point out that that was a special permit. It was a special permit before the planning board that was simultaneously doing the site plan review. So no different board, no different hearings, and that a variance is much different than a, than a, than a special permit. The fifth thing that we cite too is an attorney general's opinion from Attorney General Campbell. Regarding the city of Marlboro that issued on March twenty-third, twenty-three. In that case, the city of Marlboro did a zoning amendment. To have solar projects go through a special permit process. And the attorney general approved that amendment, but very much with caution of. How it had to be applied. It had to be applied extremely narrowly and very limited and very restrictive. In order to not go and violate the zoning amendment. And then lastly, we cite to a case from, uh, nineteen sixty-seven from the Supreme Judicial Court. Which has nothing to do with the Dover amendment, but just deals with the property rights of an owner. When you have adjoining properties in one community and another, and there's an issue of access and whether there's a zoning difference in one property, one community versus another. So there's a lot here. There's a lot to go, go through. I'm not looking to go and put your counsel on the spot or the board on the spot. I just wanted to highlight those issues. We have it and we'll submit that to the board and we're happy to engage in a discussion if needed. Um, i- in, in the future, but I did want to highlight, I did want to highlight those.
I appreciate that. And when would we be able to submit it to you?
I'm going to submit, I'm going to submit.
In the town council, you can get a copy.
Either from you folks or you can send it to me directly.
We'll do that. We'll provide.
Uh, I think everyone knows this has been a, you know, evolving area of law and so, uh. You know, I don't, I don't need to give you my off the top of my head responses. Now we'll put them in a, in one, uh, document for you, but.
Okay.
Um, we stand by our position that this use is not allowed on this property. If they want to use it on this property, they have to go to zoning to do it.
Thank you.
I'll write that for you.
Well, that's good. And, uh, so then just generally, uh, on the south, we had, uh, so this is meeting number two. So this house, we're meeting number three from the board. Yep, come up shortly. Uh, with respect to the last, uh, meeting, we had a, uh, a robust conversation. There were a number of comments made and questions from both the board as well as members of the public. So what we did is we watched the video and we tried to summarize those questions that were, were raised. We haven't received anything directly from, from, uh, the board or, or the southern ones yet, so we thought we would be proactive. And we went through those questions, summarized them, and we provide answers to the best of our ability and correspondence that was. Uh, that was sent, um, last week. I'm happy to kind of, uh, go through some of those, both for benefit of the board and the public.
Yeah, we can ask, uh, you guys want to go through there, there's fourteen questions and answers. It's about three pages. If you just want me to read, you can stop me. Or, or you can pick and choose which ones you'd like to go over, but I know you said the time is limited tonight, so I want to be respectful.
Um, let's try to go through them, sure, then for the audits.
That's why I'm here. Um, so. I'm going to run through them. I'll look to you guys and if you want to stop and ask additional questions.
That's fine.
All right. So, uh, first question is, are we using bi-facial panels? If we introduce them, would we be able to reduce the size of the array and the responses? We are using bi-facial panels already. Um, and the cost of the land is really driving force behind the total size of the system. Um. There was a question if we could do visual simul- uh, simulations.
They can just do a little bit or so.
Sure, sure. Um, the solar array will not be able to be visible, uh, from any public right of way. So any rendering attempting to show the solar array from Maple Street would just be an image of the existing trees. Um, on the south system, we did, uh, create an image that just shows the, the new entryway and where the poles will be. Um. We provide that via email already?
Uh, not yet. I, I could potentially connect it here and share it as a, as an exhibit for tonight.
I'd like that part of the copy if you don't mind as well. So we can put that on the website and that would be great.
I'll, I'll keep moving down the list. Is the solar project subject to a host community agreement? Um, the response is the solar arrays are exclusively in Franklin. Uh, the Bellingham land will be utilized for access to the Franklin side of the property. Uh, the access already exists. Uh, the change will simply be a passive use of the property into the Franklin side. Uh, Bellingham does not currently have a host community agreement with the other property owner for the golf course. The property currently receives a recreational tax exemption. Uh, which would be eliminated. Uh, so this would cause an increase in the taxes collected, uh, by the town of Bellingham. There was another question about the town losing sales tax from the golf course itself. Again, that golf course is fully in Franklin, so the town of Bellingham is not receiving sales tax from.
I have another question.
Sure.
Um. What was the change from your original agreement with Franklin to have a pilot program to now doing a tax? Um, some kind of tax incentive agreement with the town of Franklin that you're currently in negotiations with?
Yeah, sure.
Explain that a little bit?
Let me address that. So in the Franklin board, they referenced a pilot agreement, which the assessor corrected the board, that's not what applies in a solar field. So they say what they do is tax agreements. Essentially what has transpired over the areas of the law is certain solar companies over the past few years. Have made arguments and there was a question in the law as to whether the equipment, the personal property out be situated in Franklin. Would be taxed exempt from a personal property perspective. The law has developed that that's not the case anymore. So some communities do one of two things. Either one, they just value the personal property and it gets taxed like any other business. Or others go and they try to set the value in advance, so there's some expectations and understanding from the beginning. So the planning board had asked us if the town was interested in doing that and if they were. To engage in a good faith effort to go and do that. And so that's what we did. We communicated with them. The assessor gave us their direction and we shared with them the agreements that we have. With other communities. But we said if they want to tax it at whatever they think the fair value is of the personal property, that's fine. If they would like to have some clarity and definition from upfront, that's fine as well. And so we're engaged in those, uh, discussions and resolving it.
Yeah. So, I mean, in the simplest terms possible, there, there used to be a law that said. Uh, solar systems for exempt from, from taxation, and then it was later ruled that that's just for residential rooftop projects that are benefiting a homeowner, not for these, uh. Equivents being sold the grid. So kind of pilot agreements have gone a bit out of. Out of use for solar systems.
And that was, that was essentially the direction that we got from the town assessor in Franklin.
So there is going to be a host agreement?
Not a host agreement, a, uh, a tax agreement. It was really just deals with the personal property valuation.
Could involve any, um, athletic fields or anything, any additional transportation through this, through the, um. Uh, access road that is there?
The sole issue they asked about was the taxable, the tax personal property of the equipment. So that's what that had to go and deal with.
Well, I'd like to pick up on something he mentioned.
Sure.
And I'll probably, uh, create myself a little bit of hot water saying. We've had the opportunity to, uh, listen to some of the meetings. With the, uh, planning board from town. Tell us what your plans are for parcel two, the passive recreation and access to parcel two.
So we had told the town of Franklin that we are not going to go and develop. Uh, parcel two, uh, we're not going to put a solar ray on that. Um, and we talked to the town of Franklin and said, hey, if you would like to go. And have something positive there or things, we have no issue and we would help, uh, go and facilitate that. We have, uh, easement access, excuse me, we have access that we can provide to the public of, uh, Franklin. Uh, from the start of our property going in. Our access, um, in the area where you'll get to this parcel two area. Is through the, our easement rights on the one eighty-six Maple property. So we have easement rights of access. We don't have. Our own piece simple access over to parcel two. So we have disclosed to the town of Franklin that we can do everything within our control. But, uh, all we could do is either support their request to the owner of that access right. To grant that to the town of Franklin to be a good. Uh, or the town of Bellingham to be a good member and good, uh, uh, good community member, uh, that will go and do business out there. Um, either to support their request or we can make their request, uh, for them. Uh, together with their support. And so we've been working with the town administrator who just came back from vacation. And, uh, he's given us some direction on how we'd like to proceed. And so we told the board we would act in good faith to try and make that happen. Uh, but we can control what we can do on property that we own. We can't control what others do on their property.
Yeah, I, I have a simple question.
Sure.
Access to, let's see. If I recall correctly from the meetings. Of the town of Franklin, it's either a four or four acre parcel, is that correct?
Nine acres.
Nine acres.
Oh, on parcel two?
Parcel two, yeah.
Okay. And you want to potentially use it for fields?
No, we, we offered it. To the town of Franklin to use if they want to have some sort of passive recreational use or there's a, uh, uh, virtual pool there, so. Keep it natural or. We, we told them they can, if they can use the property, uh, for a passive use.
Okay.
There's lights on that, correct? There is a, because I've seen a proposal with lights in that parcel two area.
No.
I.
No, there's, we have the, we have the two proposed lights that we show that are solar, solar powered. For the potential use of, of parking off the gravel action. For parcel two, that was submitted as part of the, the plans to Franklin. That show the intent for future. Public use.
Yeah, one, one or two solar lights.
That's correct. The two, two poles.
But that's not. An improved, those aren't improved lights. That's not what we're necessarily doing. That's what we would provide. But that's not an improved, those aren't improved lights, that's not what we're necessarily doing, that's what we would provide them should they want.
That's right, that's right.
The parcel and should they gain access to the parcel.
Yes.
And so we were willing to provide some things to them, some fencing in case they wanted it fenced in.
I, I understand that. But access to that land comes to Belling.
That's the only way to that parcel, correct?
Well, we, we're now in our third or fourth meeting here. Don't you think it would be nice if we had known that ahead of time? You're a- asking for access to the golf course and you're also asking for access to parcel two. Which is between parcel three and parcel one. And if we hadn't been astute enough to listen to the meetings in Franklin. Were you going to mention that you may have additional access to land in Franklin in kind?
Sorry, so if I can address that, I, I think that narrative is, and I'm saying is incorrect. Right, so right now, all we've told Franklin is that we have parcel land. That we, we are going to agree not to go and develop and go and leave his, go leave his open space. Then in our discussion says, oh, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we could maybe have a golf park or maybe go and do something? We don't have any, we don't go and have any objection to that, but that's not there yet. That's dramatically premature and the access that would go and exist on, on that would not even be on our land. So if and when that would go and come up, the town of Franklin would have to make a deal with L and P properties. They would have to go and be an applicant, not us, and this may come up, this may not come up. What we can control and what we've told the town of Franklin is that we can control our decision. To not expand the solar array and not build, not build out larger on the parcel two. We could go and do those, and, and do those, and do those other things, so.
I, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay. My basic education is always telling me to look at the short-term solution, long-term solution, and try to put things in place. To address that. The town of Bellingham elect us to let out for their concerns, short-term and long-term. I think your presentation at the beginning of this meeting. I guess caught up by and clarified a lot of issues for the board.
Okay.
And, and if it had been at the very beginning, I think we could have done, gone down a different path. That was a, a great start to moving forward.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention the concerns, long-term, that we could have with parcel two. With additional access coming through Belling.
Understood.
I just wanted to get it on, get it on the table.
Okay. I appreciate you sharing that.
Continue if you want, sir.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Uh, so the next question on the list is, is somebody said that, uh, they had done some online research. Uh, they had seen property values decrease from fifteen to twenty-five percent. Um, based on, on solar deals being in the vicinity of the homes, um, I brought. A huge stack of research that says, uh, otherwise, these are university studies that are not paid for by the solar industry. Um, and they showed that the, uh, in some cases, there's a decrease of one point five percent. To certain home values that are next to large industrial solar systems. Uh, it specifically also says that home study in the state of Massachusetts showed no decrease in property value whatsoever. Um, and then, um, uh, attorney Peters, uh. Has showed that there's been no decrease in property values based on that the solar field is already there.
Okay, are you submitting those tonight?
This is already submitted. Uh, there's links, there's links, got all those in here. Uh, so there's online links that you can click on to all the studies.
Not submitting that tonight?
Yes.
I mean, it's already submitted as, as links, I can submit the hard copies of, and you can take news if you want.
So, uh, obviously it is not like this.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to show that it's not.
So, as, as we understand that all the files for the board have been a Dropbox link. And in that letter, we did, we hyperlink those reports in there, so you have easy access to that without having. For us to have to kill more trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, any trees.
Um, the next one is, this is more of a comment that we've gotten more than a few times that, that solar is targeting.
Yeah.
A golf course, um. That is missed, as, as our attorney said, uh, is not the case, um. Uh, we did not target this site, uh, this site was found, or, or the owners found us. Um, to the best of our understanding, this golf course, like, like our attorney said. Um, it's going to be sold already with us or without us. Um, so what we're here to do is provide a, uh, low-impact development that's going to reduce traffic on Maple. It won't be seen from Maple, uh, that's going to be quiet and increase the tax base for the town. Um, and not cause any of the problems you'd see from an industrial standpoint. And not put strain on city services that are residential development, yeah. Um, we did not target golf course ever, we don't target businesses like that. Um, and we would never approach a, a golf course that's in business and at them, so it's just not what we do, so. Um, you know, I, I kind of felt like I had been a friend as a bad guy since we came to town. Uh, it's not my intention to take a golf course away from the community, it's to buy a piece of land that's for sale, you know?
I appreciate that.
Um. So next, the public has, uh, expressed concern about clear-cutting trees in Bellingham. There's no clear-cutting of trees on this side of the border. Um, and the tree clearing, uh, in Franklin is fairly minimal for the size of the project, that leaves nine total acres, right? On both parcels.
Um, southern portion is nine acres.
That's correct, so there's nine acres of selected tree clearing, most of it is a golf course, so most of it's fairway. Um. Uh, why are there two separate entities, uh, owning the two separate sites? We touched on this last time. Uh, every time we submit an application, we do it with the new LLC. Um, when I submit a new project in our system, it's assigned a new LLC, they don't. We don't know how close the systems are together, so there's two points of interconnection, there's two LLCs, just. There, you know, we wouldn't make an exception because there's a distance close. We have three warehouses all next door to each other, um, that we're doing in Dennis. All of them have separate LLCs, even though, you know, the warehouse is share partner, just what we.
Um, I always have a question about that, just because I don't understand it.
Yeah.
Just, I, just, and I apologize for English. I'm confused about the numbers. Both applications have that it's a fifteen thousand megawatt system.
Mm-hmm.
The interconnection impact study that you provided has four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah.
As your packet here.
Yeah.
So when we look at the site, you have the parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three.
Yeah.
If e, if the two parcel one and parcel three, the narratives have, in their narrative, that it's a fifteen thousand kilowatt. Solar array system. But the interconnection impact study that was provided is four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. That's like just in my own brain, I'm assuming that parcel one is like saying five thousand, parcel three is five thousand. Based on this report.
Yeah.
So where are we getting the fifteen thousand number from? That's, I just need to understand that because I'm, I'm having a tough time grasping that when I'm looking at the material, we're both, we're submitted for fifteen thousand megawatts.
Sure, so, um, the utility size of our project in AC power. But if I put, it was a four ninety-nine system, that's much smaller than what we are actually proposing in DC. So we felt it's misleading to put the smaller AC number in our application, so we always put the DC number because that represents the true size of the system. Um, so at any point, we can only export, uh, the, the DC size of the system, which is four megawatts and nine hundred ninety-nine kilowatts. Um, so that's what you're seeing, everything else that's generated that's higher than that amount is part of the battery storage system that can be. Um, sent out at night, um, so the actual DC array is much larger than the AC. They're looking at me like I'm talking funny talk.
Could you just, um, in layman's terms, just provide a diagram and sort of transitions. From one calculation to another, so we understand.
You want me to provide that, uh, in writing later?
Yeah.
I can do that, so, but the big thing is the bigger number is DC power, the smaller number is AC power, utility study, the AC power. So I'll provide you with.
Yeah, I see the five thousand kilowatts on this report, so I'm just wondering with the fifteen, then if we've got a fifteen kilowatt. Array that's been.
Yeah, yeah.
Proposed within the application.
Yeah.
But the impact study on this references a five thousand kilowatts. Where are the other ten thousand kilowatts accounted for, I guess, and maybe I'm, I'm the only one that doesn't understand this, but I, I think that's, that was, I just. It's just, I'm curious on where those ten thousand kilowatts are that aren't noted, like in this report that says five thousand kilowatts.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide that to you, I can keep trying now, but it sounds like, it might be better just coming from an email.
Yeah, I think it would be.
Yeah, you got it.
It's, it's that above my head.
Yeah.
But again, I'm not here, I'm not in that.
Uh, you got it, yeah. Um, so there's a question if we can access parcel three through parcel one. Um, so utility-wise, we cannot, um, utility won't run a new circuit along existing poles to another location. Um, so we need the individual access for the utility from each system, um, theoretically, we could. Do car access just from the one point and then drive down to the southern system. Uh, it's our thought that the fire department's not gonna, uh, appreciate that and they want some direct access. To, to the southern site.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so for, for safety reasons, we think that's best. Um, and it just makes more sense to have an access for every system and application. But if, if, if it's something that the fire department wants to discuss or you guys want to discuss, we can, we can talk about that access issue.
Okay.
Uh, but the, the poles will have to stay the same on the southern parcel, so it'll, it'll have to be the connection. Um, so can the number of poles be reduced from four? So we touched on this last time. We can go to two poles and an equipment pack instead of having the, the equipment pole mounted. So we've already gone through that utility, gotten it approved, so now it's two poles and equipment mount instead of four poles.
Thank you.
Um. What infrastructure, in, infrastructure in the town would be changed? Uh, so in the northern system, we've got the impact study back and there is no changes offsite. We expect the same thing from the southern system, that there'll be no, uh, major infrastructure changes or any at all, um, offsite. Um, but when the impact study comes back for the southern system, we'll provide it to you for confirmation.
Thank you.
Um, how we have can ensure, uh, safety during construction, that's traffic safety, uh, specifically. Um, so we're amenable to a condition requiring a traffic safety mitigation plan be provided to a police department prior to the issue, so the billing permit. Um, obviously we'll be getting deliveries, so there will be trucks entering the site for a two to three month period. Um, vehicle trips a day, based on what I've heard about the golf court will be reduced. Um, but there will be the, the big trucks for a short period of time, and then after that, vehicle trips a year to the site approximately four, so. Four total vehicle trips a year for, for routine maintenance. Um. Uh, so what about maintenance vehicles, want the solar, I touched on that. Um, who's getting the power from the array? So we're selling it directly to Ever Storage, who sells it directly to the community. Um, will Next Grid own the property and the solar app asset? So, uh, regarding the own the property and the asset, uh, we're getting funding from it long-term, so part of the fund that funds our projects. Um, we'll be the long-term owner and operator. Um, that being said, just like any commercial building, it could be sold in the future, but this isn't a. Uh, we're the developer and we're going to flip it to a long-term owner, that is what a lot of companies do and have to do to keep their cash flow up. Um, we did that in the early days of our company, but now we're in a different phase where, where we're going to be the final owner and operator.
Okay, it's a good half, my one eighty-six.
It happens all the time, and, and we had to do that as a startup company because that's how you make money to. Become a bigger company that can own and operate, but we are there now, that's the kind of funding we are, uh, looking forward to this product.
Okay.
Um, then that was the last question.
I'm sorry?
That was the last question.
Okay. Um, I have a couple. You've rented L and P a few times and you're cutting down nine acres of trees. How are you going to transport those trees off the park?
So, they'll be trucked down, uh, the, the large logs will be taken by a company that is, are professional loggers.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the smaller stuff would likely be chipped.
Okay. Okay, um, in Bellingham or in Franklin?
We're not cutting any trees in Bellingham.
Okay, but the shipping, where, where would that take us?
If on, on our property in Franklin.
Okay. All right. Um, do you plan to bury any, any wires at all in the property?
Yes.
Okay, do we need to widen any areas to accomplish the, uh, burying of wires?
Uh, do we need to, sorry.
Access room.
Uh, oh, the existing access room, you need to widen it? Um, to bury the, the conduit we want, there's already conduit there that, that goes back and feeds, uh, the existing golf buildings. Uh, Everest course. Could potentially require, uh, some widening, especially next to the two new poles. Uh, after that, it's not their business, so, uh, no.
Okay.
So after the two new poles, then the answer's definitely no.
This question's more to, to your attorney. If I'm not mistaken, some of this land is on sixty-one, covered by sixty-one B. How do you propose to deal with the sixty-one B issue?
So once we have our permitting, uh, once we have the votes, uh, at that point, we'll go through the sixty-one B process, provide the notification. Uh, to the town.
To both towns, I assume?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And they have, uh, both towns have the right of first refusal.
Okay.
To go acquire the property.
All right. I, I usually don't go all the questions first, um, I mentioned earlier. I look at short-term, long-term, um, issues here. I've been studying your, uh, proposal for a while. You have a lot of cul-de-sacs out there to get access to these panels. Um. If I was to remove the panels in twenty years from now. Looks like you have markings or diagrams. I'm, it's going to surprise you, but maybe not, for a future subdevelop. How are we going to address that?
So.
I, I, I know, I.
I mean, I'm, I'm forty years old, you know, the owner of the company is older than that. I, I hope that I'm retired by the time this thing, you know, pops out of the ground, or at least I'm a consultant somewhere. Uh, it's not our long-term goal to redevelop this as something else, we're not a.
So you're buying the land, the Frenchies are not leasing the way to you.
Correct.
Okay.
So, you know, we don't design the system with a future use in mind.
I, I understand, but from my viewpoint, if you're looking at it, remove the panels.
Yeah.
And it looks like you could do the subdevelop.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, so the future use of the land is just like anything else, you, you know?
Okay.
And, uh, this chair, yes, there, the, the land's being sold and it's pursuant to that sixty-one B process. That, uh, will go through town and, uh, they have that, the town will have that right of first refusal, so.
Okay.
No convoluted arrangement here, it's a straight purchase.
Yeah, okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, any other board members? Um, Rob, you looked at the peer review?
I did, so, um, yeah, the beta peer review, it looked like. Was very thorough, um. Just for everyone's knowledge, it was for site plan review and.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, one moment? Just to clarify, can you give people a bit of your background? Just to make them feel, you know, comfortable with what you do for a living?
He knows the stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he, he does.
Anyway.
He's a civil engineer.
So, beta peer review, uh, covered site plan review and stormwater review within the town of Franklin, which also included zoning. There were three rounds of peer review, which dated between, uh, May twenty-fifth and August seventh. With a fourth letter, which was a clean letter from Beta Group on September eighteenth. And overall, I mean.
That's just, the discussion's on the north, which is fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, we might want to wait for that then, because that's parcel one, that's on parcel one.
We get the peer reviews for both, but the, the four letters and the clean letter, that was parcel one, which is the north.
Fair enough.
I apologize for interrupting.
That's okay, all right. We're going to separate the lots.
Right, yeah.
Um, so disregard that, I guess, um. The only thing that I wanted to note, I have a few questions and comments, but. Not related to the peer review, um, there was a, or a few comments in here regarding. Um, there was a or a few comments in here regarding site access. And for parts, both parcels really. Um, I know the specific comment was regarding making sure that those cul-de-sacs that are proposed meet the requirements of. Fire apparatus for the town of Franklin. I think that our fire department, since there's a good chance that if anything happens. It will probably be Bellingham that responds, that those cul-de-sacs meet our apparatus requirements. Um, as well as any other comments from public safety. That was probably the biggest thing with the peer review.
May I ask a question? Traffic wasn't mentioned, was it? There there was not a traffic peer review, correct?
Well, there's really no traffic generation for.
Well, I'm I'm hearing though earlier in discussion that there's potential. Athletic fields, sports fields, town usage, other types of things in the future. That would be using access through these parcels particularly?
No, cuz that's for, that's for a separate parcel, which would be under a separate application.
Not connected. And the cars wouldn't go to be able to go to bolt? Didn't we just hear that the fire apparatus, but because of fire reasons, the roads had to be connected?
Fire, fire will have access because of the gates and the ability to get in through gated access, but regular. You and I going down the street, we would hit an access gate and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to get through it without ability to get through the box box.
Okay, so we're okay with a condition that says that in our, in our agreement?
So parcel two does not have the same gated access line.
I think I don't.
It's gonna be the same for for both parcels, is that is both parcels, because that would bring up a traffic. And if there's a traffic, we're talking peer review now. So if peer review, we wanted to full peer review on traffic. Or condition it that it would not be accessible. Jumping the gun, so that's a topic peer review.
So yeah, let me, let me just for clarity, I guess, let me. I know I'm trying to talk about the south, but I think we're kinda talking about the north a little bit, but we'll talk.
You you mixed them when you said the fire apparatus could be back and forth, so I'm gonna go there. No, that's that's okay.
So the northern project. Will have a perimeter, basically security fence that goes around the entire solar development, that will only have access through gates. Okay, so in that gate is the existing gate, uh, existing drive, is that correct? Usually the existing drive of the golf course, the gate that is there today, that's not the gate we're referring to them. There's another gate that's much further up the drive, that's not visible from Maple Street, you'd have to come around almost basically towards where the true. And like beginning of the parking lot is now for the golf, well, of course, that's where the entry gate is for the north. Um, the southern project has similar setup, perimeter fence, gates that. At the entry point, so only get access to the southern project, parcel three through another access gate. So no, neither neither of the solar projects would have. Um, an ability for somebody from the public to come on to the property.
To get to Maple Street.
Without going through gates, that's correct.
Okay, so you're you're okay with us conditioning both of those properties not having public access. Through those properties that, so your view is the question. So the peer review normally would include traffic. When we're doing a review of your review.
Yeah, so so with regard to traffic. The um. The operations, once once the sites build, we basically have maintenance that takes place quarterly. So you're talking one, one or two vehicles every two months. So that, that's the maintenance, but then. Franklin wants to build a park on parcel two, are they gonna be able to access that part through the north of the south system?
And we're just agreeing that. You're probably agree with me that we're we're gonna condition that, right?
Yeah, and so there is an existing, some existing easement to the other, the middle solar field. That we told the town of Franklin, if they want to access parcel two, they're gonna need to seek their own access. And they're gonna have that in an application with you guys, I presume. And I would think if you guys would be happy about the park, but if you don't want it, I'm sure. Franklin's not gonna press the point, but wouldn't be accessed through the north.
That's correct.
The question being is, is there any kind of be any end around to an approval of this project? That would go and get around a Bellingham review of public access into the shop, yes or no?
On both parcels and we can continue, and that'll be part of the condition. So if I. You'd have to just like just hurt it. You'll be able to get the parcel one owned, parcel three owned. But the fire department have the ability to regain. They get access to both parts.
That's correct.
Is that a fair percent?
That is, that is a good way to assess it and summarize it.
Okay. And then we will put that as.
Well, so.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, so, um. The uh, parcel two. Parcel three, so parcel three and parcel one, are they gonna access through that one access? Do you need the access through the so existing solar field to access parcel three?
That is correct.
You do.
That's correct. I'm sorry, let me clarify that existing access.
Uh, through the existing.
Parcel three, the solar project does require easements through parcel one. The north project to get access.
Okay, so you don't need the existing driveway that services the golf, um. Uh, repair maintenance that goes through the other solar field.
That's correct, don't need that, okay. That'll be part of the conditions.
That's correct, that that's how we described it in Franklin as well, that's there there's not intending to be separate driveway access. Or parcel three that doesn't go through parcel one.
But to get to two, you need to get through L M P. Is that the?
That's, you're right, that's a different situation, but parcel two is through L M P. That's correct.
Okay, that's that's what we.
One more question.
Uh, on on your one.
Okay, so parcel, um, so, um. L M P uh, recently purchased a a piece of land uh, adjacent to four ninety-five, and that has nothing to do with the Euro rate.
No, there's no, there's no.
So going past the pair of you just. For parcel three, I just had a couple of questions. Number one, um. Is this in front of con con?
It it will be, yes.
Okay, so you're you're intending to file.
That's correct.
Alright, so I know you you do have work next to wetlands.
That's correct, we are encroaching into wetland buffers.
Okay, so that's one question. Next to those wetland buffers, I, and I think it may have been discussed. Previously, but just for clarification, there's that. Gravel vehicular access space at ten foot by twenty foot.
Yeah.
One, what exactly is that for?
It it's solely for the the utility company in case they have to be able to pull off the shoulder of the road. And service the poles at any point. It it's not affiliated with our use, it's not intended to be a new driveway access into the site. It's solely so they don't have to block the road if we ever need to get to the poles.
Okay.
Ask a question like that?
It does, it does involve cutting, it was identified down on the plans, it is in Bellingham.
Okay, that's right done.
Yep, it's called down on the plans, we delineate the area of the tree removal, we call up the square footage of the tree removal, it's all, it's all shown on our demolition plan. Along the front edge of Maple Street.
Okay, is that one point I thought it might have been referred to as a forty by forty square foot area?
The, um, the gravel area is a little bit less than, it's not quite exactly a parking space size, it's roughly about. Thirty feet by about ten feet at this point.
Okay.
It kind of runs almost like, uh, as you're coming up Maple Street, it's more of a gravel area along the shoulder. So when you come off the road, you don't have to be worried about. You know, tires sinking into mud or running up the the vegetation there.
Alright, thank you for clarification.
So how many trees will be?
Uh, it was it was roughly about fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, so is it how close to the right way, cuz will you, you'll need to probably do a scenic road for me? Is that the scenic road, is that, is that close enough to where you would have to?
We would be right along the front edge of the road.
So I I think they would have to do a scenic road permit, which, you know, that's something that you would have to apply for.
Yeah, I finally, sorry, it took me a long time to get my computer hooked up. This one up here is just completely dead. A special way to turn this on, so if anybody else needs to use this later, get ready to hook up your own. I I think I am, and I can share my screen if that's okay.
Sure, that would be great.
Yeah, I think I need still, still it's permission, I think I need permission to be able to share.
I just text her, so.
Anyway, I have one more. Um, I know, so for parcel three, you also have the direct access easement, which. Does not go through parcel one, there's, it's basically utilizing, I believe it's utilizing the existing road where those. Um, power lines are.
No, sorry, you're talking about the uh. You're talking about the New England Power easement, that's that's located kind of along the frontage.
Uh.
Yeah, that there is, there happens to be a a path that New England Power uses through that easement, that actually easement encroaches onto. Our property, we're not looking to connect or put a road through there though. So our our access, our road access would all be back up through across parcel two, up through parcel one. And back out the current uh, golf course driveway.
So you're not looking to utilize, cuz it looks like there's. You have a gravel road kind of connecting to that.
It it's not intended to be our our access road. Is that existing or is that proposed? Our gravel is is all proposed, whatever's. So you are gonna put it there, it's not existing. Right, and and that was was really actually set up. As a secondary, um, in case of say an emergency. It's not, it's not a, it's not a driveway entrance that we intend on using.
But it, it's there and it's intended for if there's emergency.
Yeah, just just like we would have in case you have a. Parking situation where you have a backup emergency in case you use secondary means of egress. That could potentially be used, but.
So.
It's not, it's not our driveway.
Alright, so, so you don't have rights to that.
No, no, we're not, at this point, we're not, we're not pursuing, trying to have an access drive through. The easement that we basically give into New England Power to to go back and ask for access through a driveway, uh, we're not, we're not seeking that.
Alright.
Can you clarify with something? So which which? Which is the one that you're gonna have access through parcel two, is it one or three?
We would need parcel three needs to drive through parcel two and parcel one to have access.
So why isn't two part of this project?
We need to do it, but but two is part of the project, like. We depicted on the plans, we show that that easement area, we just don't have any other improvements depicted on it. So we show the gravel access road, we call out the easement area. That's depicted on the plans, there's no solar related.
On parcel two?
Are we saying?
Are you moving trees on parcel two?
In the in the area for the access, that yes, that's right. Uh, that's built into that total site disturbance of nine acres, so I I'd have to go and.
Should it be part of the process? If you're removing trees, building access roads, sounds like part of the project to me. It sounds part of the project.
Listed, so it's it's listed as one of the lots that's listed. Well, this is our second meeting, we, and and going back to what I presented at the very first meeting. I showed the overall plan that had all three lots. Our overall site plan shows the connection, we're not, we're not like hiding the.
I'm not saying that, but we've never really discussed.
Okay.
It's always been a parcel three, parcel one, we try to keep them as separate as possible.
Sure.
And then now we're talking about parcel two, that's.
Yeah, no, so. So par- parcel one, two and three are all part of. Let's call it the the project development as a whole, we started out with. With a lot, let's call it more of a lot consolidation, A in our plan that we did in Franklin to to define. Parson one, two and three. That's correct, and parcel two was always identified as. A a lot that was not gonna be used for solar, but except for access.
But can, but just give you a side up.
That's correct. Reason I'm still not able to share a screen. I I am, I show up as G DeBona.
G DeBona? Okay, let me see if I should connect with you now, wait. So you're, you see yourself right here?
Um, I might be on a different screen, I'd be like the next one over.
Anyway, that's all I had for questions and comments for parcel three, so.
Parcel two, is that a separate feed out to Maple Streets to the power lines? Underground feed. Go down, then parcel. You're not going all the way back, loop all the way around, go all the way back down the existing entryway that is all.
With two separate.
That's gonna go down. Where that will feed in, you're gonna use three poles at the end of that?
There's the existing and two that poles and then a pad.
Yeah, I couldn't find that cuz it really wasn't on the ledger where a pole was. I didn't even know that.
So I I can, I can, I can clarify that pretty quick.
When you feed that, are you going down the existing road that's there that feeds the golf course maintenance building in the back?
You're talking about the northern.
When you directly go out. When you come out of your loop, you go straight out to. You're heading from Maple, uh, from Maple Street to tie in a second line, second stage tree. You're gonna go underground with your wiring. Set it up to three poles, transformers, whatever you do there, tie in there, but are you using the existing road that's there now?
So.
Exactly, the ones that go through.
No, we're not using that.
So you're running, you're gonna use a different access to get to there. You're gonna create another.
I don't, I don't, I'm. And we have access for each project. We have interconnection.
How do you get from that site through Bellingham? Do that whole.
Yeah, let's let's do it to the plants, it'd be helpful, so we're not getting confused.
Yeah, it is working, if it did have it up, I just have to close it back down. Pull up uh, all the plans and then and the reference. So let me, let me do this, yeah, let me go back and share my screen, I'll zoom into this drawing. I'm gonna use the overall site plan as our as our guide. Just to, um. Just to clarify what what we're looking at here, and then I'll zoom in. The the northern portion of the plan, which in this case is colored in blue. That represents the solar project for the north, which we are referring to as parcel one. The space in the middle between the two solar fields, which shows a gravel access road and the rest of that land is basically to to remain. Um, is that parcel two that we're referring to as the potential future use that that Franklin might do something with, uh, as far as.
So parcel two, can you circle that with the mouse?
Uh, yeah, right here, and and my mouse is showing up if not.
Yep, that thing in the middle was the Vernal Pool that I referenced.
So, uh, the gravel road that you you're proposing to connect one and three with, that goes through two. That's correct.
Yeah, how long is that route approximately? Is it over ten thousand feet of disturbance?
Ten thousand square feet of disturbance. I I'd have to, I'd have to calculate, I don't know off the top of my head how much square foot is within parcel two alone is the disturbance. What I'm, what I'm now zooming in on, it was in the black and white, that's the, that's the parcel. Three development or the southern solar project that we're referring to. That access does come down through parcel one, across parcel two. And then it it does connect and gets to, um. What we refer to as these turnaround areas, uh, which were designed and and modeled previously for the Franklin Fire Truck. As noted earlier, uh, we will make sure we also model Bellingham's fire truck through here as well. The question about connection. What I'm gonna zoom into here is is the Bellingham Lot thirty-two dash oh oh nine, which is the Bellingham Lot portion of the southern project, which has uh its own frontage along Maple Street. That is the connection point that we're referring to with the underground electric, the underground electric that would run um basically almost parallel to the the property line at that point, there will be two utility poles and uh pad pad mounted reclosers along the frontage. Um, that's the area that requires the tree clearing, so that we put in the poles uh in their closer pad. The third point uh of of interconnect, the all of interconnect is on the opposite side of Maple Street, so from there we have overhead wires connect to our two poles, from there they go underground, and then all the disturbance is under.
How how wide is that? That connection move with your underground?
The, oh again, it's 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 only gonna be the underground uh disturbance for the, it's not gonna be a road, so there'll be no access road or vehicles through there. Um, we've drawn it at at least ten feet wide, and and we're doing it through a basic jack, jack and board.
Why has to bore it?
Yeah, we're boring, we're not open trenching it.
Right, so I have anything is on, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's.
Underground.
We're going underground, full, full underground.
Who led with that?
And it's sending and receiving pit on either side.
So that makes you feel tough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But long as the note I'm saying, what are you clear cutting, how much?
No, okay, so let me, sorry, let me, let me just go to the um. Let me pull up the demolition plan, which I think helps to uh clarify that a little bit further. Oh, I guess, I gotta stop sharing, sharing.
You're referencing the demolition plan, just and or just wanna bring it up to you, however you wanna deal with it, but I did rep, I did read this thoroughly and and it references the town of Franklin as the decommissioning, and there's no reference to us. And just something to think about, Board, because this is just something to think about, so I don't know if there could be, you know, some kind of language that could include us and.
Yeah, that that's correct, the 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 bond that we provided was a copy of the the Franklin decommissioning law, that's correct, that was
Right.
That we were just sharing the information that we had given to Franklin.
Yeah.
Um, so it as I zoom in, it it's got a little bit more color on this plan, oh, it's not sure. Okay. If I'm sharing this. It says screen share is loading, so it's still loading.
How you working on that, could I have one more question, any chance of getting together, have your engineers come out, do a boundary line in between the two towns, and so the board can do a sidewalk? Or actually a state ride? If you, there's a large area.
Yeah.
And you do have access to golf carts, so maybe if you get together with them, supplies for golf carts.
Yeah, and I so so.
Do you want to hear?
Yeah, in the back of you go.
You're interested in walking the 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 site front.
Yeah, I wanna see, yeah, then I can bring the trench down, work with your people, and because these are the biggest set of prints I've ever seen.
Understood, understood, we, yeah, I I'm I'm sure we can.
I appreciate that.
And said something.
For the weather change you want.
The the what I will say, let's just, otherwise it takes us all over, it's connected.
Let me just check.
Um. I got balled out, let me try again.
This has all been surveyed, correct, so we know our exact numbers for Bellingham?
Yes.
Okay. Bless you.
I think that's a little orange tags we see on the trees there.
Yeah.
I think.
There we go, okay, so just for identification, because the the conversation of town line just came up, this dash line, the the dark black dash line that my cursor is kind of hovering over right now? Hold on, let me see if I can do better, let me do. Okay, I didn't draw it straight, but if you see a red line, it's mostly on my plan.
At the end of that, cross double line coming down, which is your underground four feet now, I believe, how wide is that padding disturbance going to be?
Uh, we 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 drew it as a thirty feet or thirty feet long.
Yeah, but at the end of it, distribution pad?
Oh, oh, yes, then then we then we hit the equipment pad.
Correct.
Which is uh roughly about forty by forty, that pad size.
That's all the disturbance you're gonna need to make that.
That's all, by the time we get there, that's on the, that's on the Franklin side, and that's also outside of the the really the buffer area, so I can go back and show the the site plan.
Yeah, that's why I wanna do the site block.
This this would be helpful. Let's do this connecting thing again. Okay, so so the the dash line that.
Brian, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, so I I appreciate you clarifying some of the the questions that the public had, and I thank you for reminding us and reminding the audience of the things that we have to consider, and there are a lot of things, a lot of comments that people have raised that we can't consider, but we do appreciate their input. Um, so thank you for clarifying that, I think what you're hearing from the board is that we're very mindful that the impacts, if any, are are all gonna flow to Bellingham, and we wanna make sure that we completely understand access points and what those impacts will be, and if not, not only just present day access, but what the future access would be or could be if circumstances change, and to the extent that you 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 could provide us with a definitive statement of all of the access points and all of the things that you'd be willing to condition, that the gravel road won't be an access point, all of those things, so we can see it all in front of us on a list, that would be very helpful for us to understand, I'm I'm sure the plan says it, but for us to to see it all in place, I think that would be helpful, and I appreciate Rob looking at the peer review, I think it was, you know, he addressed a lot of the people there.
And I think that, uh, thank you for that, and we can do that, if it misses to be no question, to schedule a sidewalk when we do that, that would they make?
Yeah, correct.
Get the cards ready.
No, I don't have any additional questions at this point, but transparency, I think would be the key here, that the more transparent we can be, not without the probing the better off the the situation.
Yeah, absolutely, and so I understand what you're saying about parcel two, you know, we made an offer to Franklin that they could use that property, they have no concrete plans, and we have no plans to be an applicant for any future project, I thought dangling a a park in front of you guys and saying, you know, this might happen when it's totally out of our control, uh besides the offer to let them use it was more disingenuous, not less, uh so I'm sorry you're interpreting that as as us being secretive or trying to hide something from you, but um, that's definitely not the intention.
I could, we appreciate that, it allows us to look at the scope of the project, though, it really goes to the scope of the project, you know, traffic reviews and things like that, so that's where the probing is coming from.
I I I understand how how you're interpreting, I'm I am sorry, um, not being centered. Definitely.
I'm interested to hear what kind of, just like the operation would be safe parcel three, you mentioned, you know, two months you'd be getting deliveries, and then it's four trucks a year. I know, it's really not that, it's so, how long is it gonna be deliveries, how long is it gonna be installation, when is start to finish typically for a project the size of safe parcel three? How how long will the residents be impacted by?
Yeah, so you're looking at more or less a three to four month made uh construction period where there's gonna be actually stuff happening. Uh, and so you're gonna have three major pieces to that, you're gonna have the the clearing, the site work, civil work. Uh, then you're gonna have the the steel erection, and then you're gonna have the panels going in and all the wires run, and then after that, um there's gonna be a period where people will be coming and testing and figuring everything, then and that'll be quiet and won't involve any more big trucks, but there will be people coming in and out for an additional period of time. So a project this size, it is a major fifteen megawatt project, so you're gonna buy a bit of delivery trucks coming onto the site, um, I'd say I really have tent to ballpark for you, because I don't want it to be taken seriously, if I'm if I'm way way off, I can try to get you those numbers, because it's pretty scientific, you know, you have this many bits uh this many things of steel fit on on this many trucks, so I can get you that information, but you're probably talking about a few different days um of getting maybe six or seven delivery trucks, and that might be six or seven days, um, so those are the major deliveries, then you're gonna have people coming to work, obviously, um, but based on what I've seen about the golf course, that's gonna be less vehicle trips than are happening now. Um, so you're gonna have some days where those will be delivery days, where that's where we're saying we'll provide a traffic plan by paper flag or it'll impact those residents that are using um Maple Street in those time, the delivery times, which will be you know, one or two hours in the morning, you know, generally speaking, early mornings, um unless you guys wanna condition that, then no deliveries can show up, you know, before seven AM for noise purposes or whatever. I'll do that, um, but the, so the impacts for deliveries and stuff like that will be a three to four month period, and after that, it'll be less traffic than you're seeing currently.
What role does next grid have in actual construction, do they somewhat quit out or?
Um, we have the capacity to to do both, um, on this project, we will probably be hiring uh an EPC company to do quite a bit of the labor and we'll just have a construction manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy, I have one more. How about maintenance, how often does it give maintenance of mowing, plow, you know, plowing, I realize there are storms, but maintenance during the summer? It's a large area, so I don't know if you use multiple crews?
Yeah. Yeah, so uh, so we do all all grass cutting, um, we have one scheduled trip for grass cutting, but then it's also as needed, so these are all monitored. Um, if there's a a decrease in system capacity, you know, we'll be able to determine now that's due to shading, the reason they're shading is because of weeds, and and we'll send out a crew, um, they do all that cutting without, we don't use herbicides or pesticides, so it's mostly uh vehicles that go in between the rows and then and then further weed lacking, uh and some some uh hand niggings.
It's a monthly, so does that use a curve?
Right, so currently, it's the one scheduled, and then we've had one other cutting a year, it can be as much as four, depending on how um, how rapidly the grass is growing, um, we have a project that is in um not, I guess, not terribly far from here in Millbury, um, it's not even in service yet, we've already had to cut the grass twice, um, because it's just running nuts, then we have other properties where we.
Yeah, you take in the grass.
Look at the traffic flow for maintenance and all of that all the time.
So so the the these plans do call out a specific meadow banks that's you being utilized across across the site, and it's noted to be to be mowed twice a year.
I think to your point, Dennis, and that's really important, that I would like to see a documentation of an operation and maintenance plan for that site, especially because parcel three really it really needs to be filed with the conservation and relatively soon, because I know we'd like to run parallel with conservation commission and where, um, you know, just with another solar project that we have, you know, the the order conditions that the commission had put on that project were really good conditions, and I think that the board really needs to, you know, be able to see what the conservation concerns are, if there's any for parcel three, and we do like to run parallel, so I would recommend you submit that relatively quick, because we do like to run parallel with Conservation Commission.
And Mr. Truett was there, and I do believe in the north parcel, we did submit a uh landscaping plan.
Yes.
Uh, that was the uh, the first meeting, so that is in the file.
Yes.
Yeah, and again, they they, uh, yes, they will be maintained, they will be mowed, obviously significantly less mowing than what's going on at the golf course. But but yes, it is called out uh twice a year. Um, so sorry, I, before my computer crashes again, I just wanted to, earlier in the meeting, we talked about just kind of a fore and after view, we did this this quick exhibit here, uh because there were some comments last time about what would it look like, so, everybody can look at the screen, that's that's existing. I've already clicked on my ends, the proposal, but it's it's in space, so there you go, okay, so right now, um, what you're seeing on on this plan is is they get that area of that gravel that we mentioned earlier, you can see it kind of right up against the the shoulder of the road, you can see the two new uh electric poles that have the overhead lines to them, uh and then from that second pole, it goes underground to that point, um, the pad itself is kind of still scurried further into the woods, you can't really see it from this view, uh but we'll have an equipped pad as well. And and that's that's really the area we're referring to, so when we keep talking about the amount of clearing, yes, nine acres on Franklin portion, but the portion along the front is that with piece that's in Bellingham is around like fifteen hundred square feet.
So that's more for national good, the pocket truck can do, you work on that two poles.
It's their requirement, not.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's it. Um.
That's where you're pushing the line to underground?
That's right, yeah, from that point, that's right, that'd be the, that's the new uh point of connection for us, so so I think earlier there were some questions about whether we were running the lines down the L P property or anything else, or back all the way up through lot one, or parcel one?
That's not, yeah.
That's all shown on this, and these, um when you're looking at this set of site plans that were provided, both these areas are called out on on insert sheets A and insert sheets D, so both those are good to back back in reference, that shows all the improvements that can be done in Bellingham Y. And I just got, I just got one down.
So insert sheets A and D, you can have your end that key.
A and D, yes, A and D are the sheets.
I'd like to finish up with a few questions.
Yes, absolutely.
Um. It might have been a inadvertent, one of the meetings, a couple of residents mentioned that they have increased water in their face. Have we determined as the golf course or anything in the area impacted that?
Uh, not, not that, not that we can, not that we can go and speak to, we can say we are investigating and talking to the chief to determine of water supply and make sure that the fire chief will.
No, no, I mean, even equal space.
I, not nothing that we've been able to go and um and and determine, the golf course is on well.
So what what I will say about the stormwater and and it's covered in detail in the beta review letters, the peer reviewed beta review letters, most of primarily, most of the review is focused on stormwater, we provided a full drainage analysis report for both the north project and the south, and it showed how we are basically mitigating stormwater in in those conditions.
And a lot of the pictures towards Franklin, I'm understanding, correct?
That's correct, yes. Yes, it all.
Almost all of.
That's correct.
Pictures towards Frank.
That's right.
So it's conceivable that that could be addressed, but we don't know.
It it's it's being addressed as part of the project to mitigate and make that situation improved.
Alright.
But as far as what's happening now out there, uh, most of that existing drainage, correct, does actually drain to on the Franklin side.
Okay. Um, I think you've already done one thing I asked for for future, is just official form of what it'll look like, uh when it's done. We discussed sixty-one B, um we have to go in front of conservation.
Yes.
And you're gonna have to make a decision in conjunction with uh this board and our attorney on the zoning board. You're also gonna trigger um scenic route to back. And I think what we may wanna do to try to alleviate that as best we can, um, could you give us comparison of what the noise would be for a golf course compared to a solar farm? I suspect it may be less, but can we try to verify that?
Uh, yes, we'll we'll work on.
So I don't want you to do a full blown sound study, we could get some comparisons on the volume of noise.
That's making these.
Except for that you're connecting boxes.
You put in the boxes.
Right.
Compared to what's going on in the.
Yes, yeah, that we can, we can put some information together on that, I will also identify, it it, I know it's on the plans, but it's a very small line, so it might not be picked up, we do have um CMU walls around the pads.
Okay.
So deflecting any any noise that would actually come from the equipment pads.
Mm-hmm.
So that those walls are are facing towards the Bellingham side.
Right, exactly.
So those already put into the project.
And just to note as well, that was in beta group's pay review letter.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, just to.
I know, I just wanted to make sure it gets addressed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, has Franklin done any other pay reviews that you'd like to share with us?
Have they done?
Has Beta done, have any other pay reviews been done?
No, we've given you everything that's been uh that's been update.
What I think we'd like to do now, moving forward, and this will apply.
Their in-house engineering letters.
Um, I just wanna make sure I give you accurate information.
So to be clear, we gave you all their third party beta review letters.
Yeah.
I don't know if I attached the the in-house engineer for Franklin. I don't know if I attached the the in-house engineer for Franklin also wrote letters. They were much smaller in nature than these.
Okay.
Is parcel three in Franklin have not been permitted yet? So that one's still.
That's, we're still in the process of going through review and approval for parcel three and Franklin as well.
What I'd like to do, uh I think we've made a lot of progress this evening. I think it's probably the best meeting we've had so far out of all of them. I'd like to look at developing a checklist. Uh what needs to be be done, what's already been done. Um and we can work with the applicant on those. Um I'd like to recommend a continuation. At the beginning, you said this solved in two thousand nineteen. Is the trust under any time constraints?
Yes.
Okay. Do you articulate that so we can try to work together on that?
Um I I I I can't really divulge those 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 details without their without their approval.
Okay.
But I can answer affirmatively, yes.
Okay, because we want, we try to work together. Third process to get this done. I think if we had had this meeting in early September, maybe farther ahead than we're on right now. But I think we learned a lot. I think tonight was very positive. I think in the, when we're done with this, it'll be partly similar to the other part of other parcel.
Private department quickly and then comments and then zoom.
Yeah.
That's okay.
So uh my only concerns with this are that the roads be maintained. Um that's one of the big problems we have with gravel roads in regards to apparatus getting down there. For overgrowth, um cutting the trees, keeping them maintained as well as plowing and giving access in the winter. Is that a process that you do? All of it gets plowed?
Yeah, we. That is correct. So even even though we do, let's call it quarterly type maintenance with regards to the vegetation. The the snow removal is a different process altogether. So the the access roads and the pathway would. Would be treated like you would in the other um access access room. So we have, we'd have snow.
So whereas all our other maintenance, we do in-house or we contract through a maintenance company for snow removal. We just contract through a local company, the same ones that do uh parking lots in the area. And they just come out when there's there's a storm. All the sections with the turnarounds. And a size loads out of the snow removal, there's gotta be a place to put that snow. Yeah, so we we plow to the equipment pack and we don't plow near the. To the rest of the panels. There's no, there's no arc and no safety reason during a snowstorm that we feel the need to do so. And if you want to have that conversation, um you have a different opinion, then that's fine. But we really only plow to the equipment packs. Uh so the the inverse, the battery storage system, uh and everything else, we let melt naturally.
Yeah, we do. There there are pretty. It it's probably hard to get a sense on the scale that big on on these drawings, but there's at least ten feet of clearance. From all the access roads to the any closest edge of any of the panels. So you have basically ten feet of vegetated lawn area that you could use for snow removal storage all around the entire site.
Like a written narrative. So Chris has it, we have it on the record, we have it in the decision if that's. If we could, if you could get us a written narrative exactly to address Chris's concern, I think if we could get that in writing, that would be great. Right, exactly, exactly.
Operation manual. Cutting up the grass and things like that as well.
Yeah.
Um the public sphere. Any questions? I see a gentleman.
Yeah, I had asked before about the water table.
You could state your name.
Steve, I see Razzle, sorry. Because of the previous solar farm and the Amazon and the Mark Park and Mulch Place. I did, after I mentioned it at the first meeting, I checked with the DPW and they said, yes, the water table is higher. And I said, well. Is it all right to act if they would do a study to find out if. Nine or ten more acres plus the road, the connecting the two, can you study if that much water? From losing all of those trees is gonna impact it even further. And if so, and you have to put in a retention basin, can it be put in on the Franklin side? Where all the impact for the solar panels are rather than on the belly of the side. And the other question was, if it's gonna be maintained as a Franklin asset. Can the access for building it? And supplying it and taking care of it come from one forty in Franklin rather than one twenty-six by the elementary school? Thank you.
Uh I don't need something here.
Okay, I mean, I can provide the answers for next hearing, just like I did this.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you want to episode meet with him, I'll reach out and we can get you a contact. Gentlemen in the back, this is Henrys.
I have a community of forty people around Bellingham. Question, why do we need another solar co- um company here again? We got one already. People have them on their houses. Why ruin a golf court? Why can't they find, have this um lawyer with their family? Try to find somebody to buy the golf court. Why do we have to impact everybody on Maple Street and everybody else around to? Take away something where kids are using and adults. And it's it's getting to be ridiculous. Bellingham is, we lost another golf course. It's just getting, now it's starting to get into the prices like Franklin, Midway, our taxes now definitely have to go up. Because you're not getting any revenue out of Maple Gate. What does a solar farm have to do with us and for and Bellingham? Are we gonna see um a less price on electrical? For electricity, or are we gonna get a tax break from them? To us in Bellingham? I see everything going to Franklin. But nothing looks like what you guys are talking about. It's it's all over the place. And it's not, it's not even what is happening in Bellingham, like left out in a in a hole. It sounds like that, and it from my point of view, yeah, it sounds like we're left out. To how it's falling, Frank will get everything. We will get cops.
Okay. Uh I think the attorney can address it better than I can. But I'd just like to remind you, over the years. We've had a lot of proposals for this piece of property. At first, it was gonna be, I remember on residential, an industrial, industrial park, residential first. Then industrial and then solar. In our dealings with the town of Franklin, separate from this board. At a different level, we've tried to look at options to mitigate the impact on the town of Bellingham. This is what we've come up to at this point in time. We are not in the business of deciding who they sell to, who the buyer is.
I agree.
But we've tried to look at reducing the impact for vehicular traffic. For the town of Bellingham for many, many years on this piece of property. Long term, we've been thinking about this and looking at it and trying to think of the best option.
But if you're saying traffic, why would you guys let Amazon be here where they throw all these trucks on a medical maple street? They're all over the place. Then you got all the trucks from D and um D and D, then you've got the uh car place. Then you've got the mulch place. You've got more trucks. You've got more vehicles coming from those places than you do at Maple Gate going playing golf. I I I understand that. Those are some industrial. I know, but it's like, it's the same thing what happened to me when I lived on Hop um up a hop at half. On Grove Street and on Depot Street. And they told us that the Dunkin' Donuts was gonna have this, that's why they're riding one forty. So Dunkin' Donuts could take their trucks and go that way and not come to my house on Grove Street. And what do they do? They made a commercial. That means that the trucks can go anywhere they want. So now they're coming down to me at that corner. And making a lot our right to go to the mass uh four ninety-five. Where it was uprooting everybody in the corner of the neighborhood. Nobody could get, we didn't know anything about this because they told it was going to one forty. That's why I moved.
Okay.
It was sad that I had to move from my house there because it was just, we counted thirty-eight eighteen wheelers in one hour. Coming down hop at half, then they were using their Jake brakes. Then I had trucker bombs on my land, people throwing stuff out on it. Yeah, it was ridiculous. And I'm just like. I love Bellingham. We're losing things here, not gaining anything.
I I understand.
You know, it's sad. You know, I came to Bellingham because I know the golf course is awesome, the town is great. But now it's getting to be like, we're gonna be like Franklin and Midway, the prices of our taxes now might go up more. We don't see nothing out of the solar bomb at all. So are we gonna get a break on the solar? Or are you electrical for us? Or are we just, it's a done, it's a done deal that we go home?
You've heard our conversations today.
I agree. I I don't want it to happen. I want to stay at the golf course.
I I understand that. But uh can you address the first person's question?
Um sure, and I I'll just relay on what I said earlier, but. Uh Mr. I think you articulated it well. Of the things that we've looked at and possibly something in discussions we've had both in Franklin Franklin and Bellingham, this is by far. By far the least impactful development. That um has been thought of, has been proposed and agreement reached. Um in in Bellingham, doesn't mean that other impacts that you talk about or looking at are irrelevant or not important. But the bottom line is what is possible there and what could be brought in there. This is by far on the range, the lowest end um. For this future of this property that is that is being sold.
Did they ever go and look and have somebody to buy them? Golf course. As is, instead of doing this, have some other.
They try to sell the course.
The property, the property's been open on the, opened on the market without limitation to use uh or impact or for uh for for a while. Uh no, no limitations to put on anybody to go and do there, only the limitations of what. Uh local zoning is in Franklin and Bellingham or what they could achieve through any zoning relief they deemed appropriate. So.
Course in the land of interest. No one is choosing, at this point, is chosen up until two thousand nineteen. Depression can keep it above.
I wish I had a paddleboard.
Thank you, sir, for that fact. Anyone else? Any questions from the audience? I'm sorry, sorry, um people zooming in.
One question, uh when do you plan on filing your NOI?
Um we are, we are ready to file. Um it's, it can happen immediately.
Any comments from our attorney before? So you know, you know the process. You have the option with the zoning board. You have to go conservation. Can we get a checklist of the things we discussed tonight?
Yes, you can. Just hit Zoom land, give some comments, somebody has their hand. It might be the cursor, but.
Is anyone on Zoom have any questions? Kelly?
No, that's that's the cursor. Yes, we do. All right.
What would you like to continue this to? We're we're getting, we're we're pretty busy.
So. We got these really confounded. We opened the public hearing for the South. We talked about both equally, so I assume. We're gonna can, are we gonna continue both right now?
We're gonna have a discussion on parcel ones, then probably, probably brief.
Okay, so for parcel two, I think we can go out two meetings, but for the north, I want to go next.
Uh absolutely, we we're we're much further along in our process rather than north. And and I, but but if it pleases the board to take a little more time so we can. Complete everything that's gonna be on this checklist that we're referring to.
Yep.
Then we could maybe skip to one or two meetings out, uh if that, if that would work better for me.
Okay. Yep, so.
We'll get, um you want to go to the next meeting?
So we have October twenty-sixth.
More than one, two.
So south, we're thinking, is that so, let's, can we do one or in three, just so it's clear for everybody? So parcel.
Three.
Three, which we're on tonight, we're gonna have to do a continuation. So would you like to do that a? Couple weeks out, or do you want to come to our next meeting on the twenty-sixth, which isn't a lot of time for you to answer.
Let's just, is there a meeting in November?
We have November ninth, which. But only one meeting. But remember, it's it's really important that that NOI with conservation. Gets filed so that when you come back on the ninth, it would be nice to know that that's moving along. Okay.
So so let's do.
Does the ninth work?
Yes.
Um could we also, if that's what the board chooses to get, the extension would be, the extension deadline date would be um December fifteenth. Like we did with parcel one, they're gonna need an extent, if they're comfortable giving.
Speaking to bring parcel three to the parcel one date.
Yes, and keeping them, it's, yeah, so we could do both of those in December.
But it's a special permanent plan to that.
Oh, we'll need the scenic route.
Again, yeah, the south has a lot more in play than the north.
Do you be looking for, uh I think the the deadline date for three is after December. Uh and I don't, so parcel one comes up first.
Parcel one does come up.
I parcel three doesn't come up and we've got the December. So we'll address an extension.
Okay.
Is it possible, again, to simplify things? And the same extension, continuation, continuation date extended for both parcels?
So so, yeah, so December fifteenth is parcel one, December fifteenth for parcel three is final.
Yeah, that would be great.
We may need. Based on conservation and zoning, we may need, we may need more time.
We understand that, but we understand that for parcel three, conservation is not in.
All right. Okay, we'll try to work with the time.
So are you thinking November ninth? Is that what you're thinking for parcel three?
Correct.
Okay, does that work with the board? We'll do, we'll ex- continue this till November ninth with an extension deadline date of December fifteenth for parcel three.
When's our meeting in December?
We have one meeting in December, which is or December fourteenth. And so that's right before, if if you're here December fourteenth and the deadline is the fifteenth, we we can extend it out. And that's kind of the purpose of doing it on the fifteenth.
Parcel three has a later date.
Right.
That's, we're not there yet.
Okay.
No, we're not, we're not. But we want to get this on this.
Do you want to address the uh? I'm sorry, John, uh uh there's parcel one if you like.
Just to keep them separate, I'm saying. I have an attorney sitting next to me.
Okay, so.
So I will need a motion to.
Continue.
You continue parcel three. I'm sorry?
At seven PM, yeah, and on Zoom?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Any questions? I'd like to call for the vote. Bill I?
Bill I.
Yeah, guy.
A motion passing in every two. Gentlemen, we'll see you um for parcel three. On a November ninth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I understand there's some documents going back and forth. And we'll get a document online before we're expecting to get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank all the public for standing.
Thank you. It'll be a similar discussion. But you more than welcome to stay.
All right, thank you.
And sir, I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
We all set?
Motion to open parcel one.
I'm like to open um next grid. Message leaving LLC, their own plan approval, this is to continue public hearing, this is parcel one, correct?
I believe. The discussion for this is just regarding scope for potential peer review, correct?
Correct.
Want to make that.
And the applicant is Ethan Reese. Of our county town council.
Yes.
Can you tell us where we are now on parcel one?
So on, on parcel one, um, everything has been, um, submitted, this is the third hearing. I have the initial introduction hearing, last hearing, we spent a lot of time, just relative, what the actual work was in, in Bellingham. Uh, as opposed to Franklin, and the need for, uh, peer review. It was, again, my, my opinion, that there really wasn't any work, so we didn't know what the peer review would be. In an effort to, to make sure the board was comfortable with that statement, provided the peer review comments, uh, that we went through the Franklin process, just so you could see what was reviewed and. Uh, feel comfortable with that, uh, that has been provided. Uh, I think our, our opinions still stand, I don't know what, um, technical peer review that you would, you would look for, but we're here to hear what you have to say, having reviewed the, the comments that we provided.
Rob, do you have any comments?
So going back to what I said earlier, peer review is for site plan review and stormwater review, three rounds from. May twenty-fifth to August seventh is the fourth letter, which was the clean letter from data group on September eighteenth. Similar to what I said previously with parcel three is that, um, you know, from stormwater standpoint, I, I think. You know, the beta peer review covers everything that's in Franklin, and there's really no improvements within, that we can see from what we have now in Bellingham. Um. With that, I think, from my perspective, the really. Access-related items are the most important, which I think have to do with public safety, you know, as far as cul-de-sacs, making sure that. Our fire apparatus can safely maneuver in sight, because. We start losing fire apparatus in your site, it's gonna be some, so, um. There's that, um. What was that, water? Hydrants?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't know, because there are hydrants that are proposed. Side, right?
There's hydrants that exist that we found are dry.
Oh, yeah, okay, we, we'll get, we want to reestablish what's connected.
Oh, all right.
Um. I'm not sure what, what would be reviewed.
We heard there, the fire hydrant should drive.
They're driving.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, I mean, I think that these are more public safety related.
Yep.
Items, you know. Um. Yeah, I'm not too sure. Peer review perspective, what would be reviewed, I still hold to that.
Okay.
Comment, my previous comment.
We're still talking the same access that we were talking about before, the same conditions, nothing changed.
Correct.
Okay. Any additional comments?
We did talk about, uh, extending one hybrid across the street, so that if something did happen, we would not delay across the street, go down. Uh, and then one somewhere further into the site, whether you do it in the middle of the site, um, to give us water source. In between somewhere around the parcel two area, or come in, uh, from that access, to give us more. Down lower to where parcel, where parcel three is, we just need water access, that would give us the whole site. Yeah, without coming across the streets.
If I could make a suggestion to the, to the board, it was public, that's a, uh, public safety, you'd be happy to meet with the, the chief, to show them, uh, the, the truck turns and all that, refer to review with them. Hydrant locations.
That'd be great. Um, Chief wants a question on what happened, it was brought up. Maybe ten years ago. Maybe a little longer, when, um. We put the solar farm on the old dump. Um, you. I'll ask you both. Is there ever a need for emergency lighting? In a solar field? If kids are back there, or someone's lawn, or whatever.
Well, we've never been required to put lighting within the site, we've been asked specifically not to, not that we would. Okay. The light pollution, so the only light we've ever been asked to put anywhere on our site is, is a blue or red or, or white light above the nice box. Uh, we have been asked to do that, um, and, and we're willing to do it, if, if that's what the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I think for us, we bring our own lighting with us, and generally, you want those sites to not be, you know.
But I'm not, I just want to make sure you can get lighting back there if you're.
Oh, yeah, that's.
As long as the access is there for us, to get the vehicles back there, we bring our own lighting.
Okay. That's what, great, thank you. Dennis?
Um, and plowing, you do that, but there's been twenty-four hours of a storm.
Yeah, we talk, we just contract with the local, uh, plowing company, and they go out there with the rest of their run.
All right, and to do the site right, can we do both possible at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And the same OEM? Will apply, will we get a copy of? Will be one for both sites, separate?
Oh, we'll get you, we'll get you separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any additional. I don't have any additional. Anyone from the public, any question? Anyone on Zoom have any question?
There was a hand though.
Do you have any additional question?
No.
So again, the same thing applies. We'll try to get a checklist, but. Obviously, they'll be separated out. To be consistent. Um. When do you want to come back?
Look, for this project, if, if I'm understanding correctly, the only really outstanding thing we have is to provide an operations and maintenance plan, and then sit down with the chief. Uh, and go over these safety issues, so. If that's all I'm hearing that's outstanding, we'd like to come back the next hearing this month.
Sidewalk, though, would be something, yeah, to do, to do too, so that often adds.
Reasons a lot of questions come.
And often, yeah, there'll be questions after that, I'm sure.
I was thinking on the November ninth and the fourteenth of December. When can we try to get a sidewalk, because if they, if sidewalk applies to both parts.
Sidewalk, we can arrange immediately.
Sandy, on a Saturday, we good?
I'm sure we can.
Okay, well, I don't allow you to sound like a board, I don't, I'm good anyway.
We'll accommodate you. Um.
So we, we would, if there's any room at all, would I come up back to the next meeting for this, for this parcel?
We can do the twenty-sixth.
We can't get the sidewalk, we can, we can just.
We have.
Tell anyone continues. Okay.
And, and we'll have the sidewalk either this, either this Saturday, or, or no later than next Saturday.
I, I already remember it's Saturday.
Okay. I'll make it.
So think about two. The, the things that we need to finish up are the, our operation and maintenance plan, so that would be something written, and whatever the fire chief wanted in regards to the, so those, we would want. At least prior, a week prior to the hearing, so that would be, you'll buy them the nineteenth. It'll be next Friday, so I think if that's doable for you, I, I mean, do you.
Can, can you, could you live with the night and develop the same night?
We can. Sounds like you only have one hearing on. In all, in all of November.
Other items on the, uh, twenty-sixth, we have two. Uh, big items on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Uh, so can we do the night?
We can do the night, that's what the board, some cheers.
And that will give us a little time to work on a, a site visit. Uh, entertain a motion.
I just have one thing, I know that discussion was regarding scope peer review.
Yeah.
But just. One item. If you could look into for parcel one. For construction access, for your construction vehicles. We kind of alluded to. How we want to know what the entrance is going to look like, parcel one within Bellingham. It seems pretty limited, as far as what can get through, because you have trees, you have the gate, um. I don't know if it can accommodate an eighteen-wheeler, with, you know, if you have construction equipment on the back. Um, if you could just look into that, because, and be mindful and let us know. If there are any changes, if you have to cut down trees along the frontage, if you have to change the gate. Anything of that sort, please let us know, as well as if there's any type of improvements that need to be done to the paved access road. And be mindful as well, I believe that there's a wetlands located in Bellingham next to the access road, so improvements may require. An NOI with con con for that. Portion as well.
Yeah, so we're not anticipating making any, any improvements to the, to the, to the access road.
Yeah. I am just.
Yeah, what we could, what I can do is, is do a, um, template for your truck getting, getting in.
That would, I think, is what you're. That would be plenty sufficient.
Yeah, we can do that.
From my standpoint.
Uh, as well, we'll run those, so.
I just didn't want to throw that at you at the next meeting.
No, I appreciate that, thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
One thing we mentioned. Um. Was to minimize the visual impact. As you drive in. What can be done to keep, to lessen the, right now, everyone likes what they see. When they drive down the street. How can we let, how can we minimize the impact? Visually.
Yeah, so, so I think.
Golf course or solar.
Sure, and I think we presented that, um, that last time, and I think the sidewalk will, will help you, help you to see, when you're standing there, you are, there's no way you're gonna, you're gonna see the solar, it's around the corner.
I'm not talking about that.
No, I, I understand, so it's gonna get. Yeah, I was just hitting the two phases, so you won't see the panels. There was much discussion in the first hearing, and we came back in the second relative to what is the, um, uh, the seventeenth and eighteenth hole going to look like.
Correct.
Kind of like the look of a golf course, but obviously, we aren't gonna mow it daily for, for a golf course, so what we, we did is we provided a plan to you, that, that the record showing that. Uh, we're going to let the, the course go to a meadow, and then if you stand from the street, which is very clear, the sidewalk, there's a natural firm right there, we've actually proposed a row of planting up on that to further buffer. Um, the, the meadow, which I think is gonna look nice by itself, but we've added, per, per your request, some additional landscaping up at the, and we can review that on site, I think it'll be, I think it'll be much clearer to see it there.
Okay.
And it'll keep the white gate like you guys want it, if we need to. Remove part of it as, for, for truck access, we'll put it back, make sure it's.
Thank you.
Nice and white.
I, I know, that's what I love.
Yeah, no, it's, it is good looking access.
So we have a motion for.
Uh, some, oh, oh, someone's.
Okay, second?
Second, yeah.
For November nine?
Dennis, I.
Brian, eh?
Bill, eh?
Bill, eh? Yeah, guy.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I think my, thank you very much. A positive meeting. I know a lot of you are here for Northern Blackstone Street. We've been here for a couple of hours. Would you object if we took like a three-minute break?
What about?
Been a long night for Mark.
I want to make sure. Thank you. I just want to make sure we have both for one and three that reflect.
The next item of the agenda this evening is Northern Blackstone Street special permit. This is to continue public hearing. The board is to receive the revised plans and comments from the fire chief. I'd like to discuss, turn it on the applicant. And discuss the review today, and also, it's a, definitely chief man. You there? And getting a question from the partner.
Sir, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Brian Fogg from Myra Coll Coll here on behalf of the applicant.
I have to clarify again, no relationship between the law firm and myself.
Thank you, and with us from our engineer carrier, come on, Michael Hassett with me, and then join us remotely as Amanda Cavalieri. Um, Amy, would you get her promoted, uh, Amanda has our updated plans for display, we don't have her, her copies tonight. I think you all have copies, but, um, Amanda can pull those up on the screen. Um, while she's doing that, just to recap, we had a community meeting with our neighbors at the library on June fourteenth. Met with the board to discuss revised plans on June twenty-second, and most recently on September twelfth. Um, and received additional feedback from, um, the board and from our neighbors on potential changes. Uh, a few suggested tweaks, and that has resulted in the revised concept plan you have before you tonight. So we're down to eighteen two-bedroom townhomes in clusters of three. That's half the density that we originally proposed, we went from twelve clusters to six clusters, and you see that now around the cul-de-sac on the concept plan. The development area is limited to the existing field, leaving nearly all of the existing woods undisturbed. And that portion of the parcel will be subject to a conservation restriction. Concept plan you have there is, does not show the entire twenty-acre parcel, it's a, that's a zoom in, on the additional open space. Um, to the top of the screen that you can't see, that would be subject to a conservation restriction as well. Um, so that's about seventy-five percent of the twenty-acre parcel that would be conservation land. Uh, we moved the buildings, um, from the last concept plan you saw, so that they're now all located on the cul-de-sac, we don't have any buildings coming off of the straightaway entrance driveway. Um, that avoids an issue that was raised by the fire department, concerned that if the home that was previously, or the cluster that was previously located. On the straightaway, um, uh, there was a response to emergency there, with that blocked access to the neighborhood, that, that concern has now been. Addressed with the relocation, the buildings are all off the cul-de-sac, and so, uh, response, um, equipment, um, would be able to be around the cul-de-sac. Um. I mentioned before, all of these homes will have fire suppression sprinkler systems. Uh, that will significantly reduce fire risk, that's something that would not be the case with a traditional single-family homes that don't have sprinklers, sprinklers. Typically see cul-de-sacs in the area, um, that, um, you see from the road, and it's usually surrounded by single-family homes that don't have fire suppression, these buildings will all have fire suppression. You also submitted a truck maneuverability plan, shows the town's largest fire trucks navigate the driveway and cul-de-sac in accordance with engineering standards. Um, our closest building is set back seventy-nine feet from Blackstone Street. That's more than two and a half times the minimum legal setback of thirty feet. And that's to the lot line, we actually pick up an additional fifteen or so feet from the lot line to the actual paved roadway. Um, so our closest building now is about ninety feet from the paved roadway, seventy-nine feet from our actual lot line. Along Blackstone Street, we're showing, uh, Green Giant arborvitaries to further screen the built area of the project. Um, and our site plans, um, will note that we're gonna use species that are resistant to deer. Uh, we've heard that concern, that we've got some hungry deer, we really like arborvitaries in this neighborhood, and we're gonna do what we can to make sure our screening is as deer resistant as possible. Um, we're also showing new plantings on the edge of the conservation area to screen our buildings. Uh, from the view through the woods, from our closest neighbors, uh, budding neighbors on Wood Street. Uh, you can see those depicted on the right, on the left side of the screen. Um, and again, these are concept plans, the, the, the updated site plans that we submit to the board for peer review, will have much greater detail in terms of landscaping, but this is to give you a sense of what we're, what we're looking to do in terms of, uh, further screening, uh, uh, for, from our neighbors. Um, this plan now shows sidewalks along both sides of the entire driveway and cul-de-sac, running from the entrance all the way around the cul-de-sac, um, drive, uh, sidewalks all around. But this plan pushes the mailbox area, uh, to about ninety feet from Blackstone Street, it had previously been closer to Blackstone Street, we heard some concerns that, um, there could be backups. Um, you know, we're also showing, um, ten visitor spaces, and you can see they're near the mailbox area, so I think. It would be a rare circumstance that two of these eighteen neighbors would be getting their mail at the exact same time and using cars, but if that were to happen, we now have room. Between the visitor parking and the, and the driveway coming in, away from Blackstone Street, I don't think that's gonna pose any, any concern. Um, we mentioned before, our eighteen units, they each have a two-car garage, that in addition to parking, that would be available on those driveways. So, um, worst case, we're looking at four cars per, um, home. Uh, between the garage and the driveway, these are all two bedrooms, and I think that's more than sufficient, and we also have ten visitor parking spaces. And we also have ten visitor parking spaces, so I mean, I think at this point, we're fairly over parked, um, in terms of, um, availability on the site. Um, for visitors and residents. Um, the driveway off of Blackstone Street remains positioned to minimize glare to the homes across Blackstone Street. And that was a concern that was raised that cars coming out of this, um, small neighborhood might be shining lights into those homes that have been there for quite a while, and the driveway is positioned to, to avoid that. Um, so wrapping up, we, now our project, we're preserving about seventy-five percent of the land as a conservation land. And we're only using the existing field area for development, and most of that's lawn space. Um, and again, I mentioned, we reduced the density from what was originally proposed by fifty percent. Um, from thirty-six homes to eighteen homes, and again, all two bedroom. Um, so I think we've, we've, um, done quite a bit of work to address the board's concerns and, and our neighbors' concerns. Um, and we're, we're happy with the project, we think we're, we're in a good place, and happy to take your additional questions tonight, thank you.
Thank you, what I'd like to do is, turn it over to the fire department.
Yeah, we did get some of the plans, um, have a. Couple of small issues, one was hydrant locations, um. So, you have, I don't know how, we don't lay lines across through the woods. Uh, so it's actually as, as it's driven, so you'll have to pick up a hydrant. From where it is, uh, you've got it as the crow flies. In that, for the, for the five hundred feet, it has to be how you drive. So as you swing in, and so you'd need one. From that first hydrant, it would have to come up the driveway, uh, and it would be somewhere, I'm gonna guess. About halfway down, about, about minimum.
Some other hydrant somewhere in the mailbox area.
Yeah, and then probably one on the opposite side, where that hydrant's located, but it would have to go around. I, I know the DPW was looking to do something about looping this. Uh, I would, that would be something that they would wanna handle, not having a, a dead end main going in there. Uh, so you'd have to talk to, uh, the DPW regards to that. But they don't like, and dead end mains, and we don't like them, but they dead end on the hydrant either. Um, so that would be something they would handle. Uh, so they would, you would need to probably have two hydrants within that develop. The swing going in, as long as it meets the, the turning radius of the larger truck, both in and out. Without taking up both lanes. So, um, that is, that it makes it.
So, it, for three of the, of the four entrance and added movements, it does meet that? Um, so when you're coming out of this, out of the development, you're taking a right. Um, the, uh, I believe that the, not the wheel necessarily, but the overhanging ladder and. Uh, front of the cab would go into. Into the oncoming lane. Um, so the solution to that, in order to make that not happen, would be to significantly widen the radiuses and. Increase the footprint of the entrance. Um, and so, given the infrequency of that movement needing to be made. Um, we feel it's best, in the better public interest to, um. Keep it as is, and this exercise, do caution if you ever need to make that movement. Um, we're, we're, we're happy if it's the pleasure of the board to widen the entrance.
Uh, what's the line of sight for that? That's my, when you're, when you're pulling out of there. That would be the, the issue with that.
We have. So, looking at the vehicle, um, you, you have five hundred feet intersection site distance in, in the right hand direction.
So, coming out.
Yeah, so looking, looking right, so the vehi, the, the lane, the, the vehicles traveling would be coming from the west. That you'd be, you'd be worried about the oncoming lanes, you'd have five hundred feet of vision in that direction, that's the intersection site distance in that direction.
And then, our other issue is the, the amount of traffic going into that intersection for North and Blackstone. Right now, that's difficult for, even for our vehicles. Uh, and for mutual aid companies coming in. So, that's always been a point of contention, we're coming off of North onto Blackstone. Now we're adding.
Oh, and if you intersect in the.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that's something that you'd be interested in assisting with, because at this point. Uh, these are all single families, now we're adding multi-family, larger buildings in. Uh, with that, we're gonna need more help if there is something going on, so we'd be requiring mutual aid from area towns. So, from men in the form of that area, that makes that swing more difficult. There's more of a chance of us drawing more help for a structure.
You're saying the, the maneuverability of that existing North and Blackstone. Uh, to evaluate that. We can certainly take a look at it. Uh, if I could, Mr. Chairman, we, we have, we have a traffic study that was done based on the prior version. Uh, that's certainly gonna be updated and submitted for peer review, and that intersection was analyzed as part of that traffic study, and it would be as part of. An updated traffic study, so we're happy to, to look at that data and, and see what our impacts would be.
Look at emergency standpoint as well.
It, it would. I don't know, the traffic say we look at that, um, it, it would certainly look at the, the roadways and impact of. These eighteen, um, homes on, on the roadway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the, the neighboring, um, fire trucks about the same size as our templates?
Yeah, if we use our template, it would certainly be adequate. We probably wanna do that. Yeah, that other than that, uh, Amy has that.
The, uh, one entrance in, one entrance out.
Uh, again, the fire department always, we, we would like to see two entrances, uh, I know this is the proposed. This is the best of what they have so far, uh, we would always prefer to, you know, an entrance and exit.
A, as would we.
So, but this is what's being proposed.
And, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, we looked at multiple iterations of how to accommodate that, you remember, the original plan. Took a road all the way out to North Street, and we heard a lot of concerns that that was not a good idea. Out of North Street, we, we looked at other options for coming, both of them off of Blackstone Street. I mean, the, the, the impact was significant amount of, of new impervious, um, that would be, um, on the site. And the location of the driveways, again, was likely to be positioned, um, directly at homes across the street, we'd find a void. And, um, given that the buildings, again, are all sprinkled. Uh, and won't have any, uh, access off of the main driveway, and we think this is, you know, an improvement responsive to that. I, I, I know the fire, fire departments will always not wanna see a cul-de-sac, and will always wanna see, uh, two ways in, two ways out, uh, one way in, one way out. Um, I think the concern is much greater with a cul-de-sac, where you only have single-family homes, which don't have fire suppressions. Uh, but again, we, we looked at those options, we think this is, you know, the best for the, the size of the site and minimizing the impact on the area.
The widening the driveway that you was talking about, um, will, will have to happen to get that widened. Would we want to?
Sure, we can certainly look at that as part of our, you know.
Safety's always first.
We're with peer review on that, I mean, the impact you can see right on there would come at the expense of landscaping and screening, that, that's, that's really what it is. You know, widening that for the truck, for those few right-hand movements on the large truck, I, I don't know how often that's gonna happen, maybe once a year. If, if we're lucky, maybe less, um, but the impact would be on screening the neighbors, that's, that's the.
We're about to have zero. First, alright?
Yeah.
So, at least, let's talk about it, so. Questions?
Um, if you're just looking for preliminary feedback before submitting, you know, full board site plans with special.
Right, the chair, we, we've submitted, um, full site plans with the original application, which was, you know, twice the size of this. We've done a couple iterations of the concept plan, responding to the board's concerns and neighbors' concerns, so, I mean, at this point. You know, we're ready to update our site plans, you know, to, to this model. And submit for peer review, but, you know, certainly open, open to additional comments and, and, you know, hearing what the fire department and, and the board is speaking about tonight.
Alright, um. There's just a couple things, I wanna be quick. Uh, middle of the cul-de-sac, is that proposed to be landscape?
Yes.
Area?
Okay.
I think if you do that, just be cognizant, cause I don't think your dumpster area is accessible with a trash truck if you do that. And I would prefer to see dumpster areas screened towards in the back, or if you can do separate. Honestly, I prefer separate trash cans per unit, not have dumpster enclosure, but. I guess it's kinda up to. I think it's up, I don't know if it's up to the app center or up to the town, but.
I, I'll just, I'll just mention, this will be a condominium, and so people will be paying common charges, will likely have a, you know, a single. Um, you know, trash and recycling pickup for the entire community, but having bins all over for, you know, again, so it's a. A private, um, non-public way, we wouldn't be having municipal trash pickup.
Alright.
Um, so. I live in one of those, and that's not so. We have trash bags for all the units they command, there's no, they didn't want the dumpsters. But they service eighty, eight, three hundred sixty units in its condo, and it's private.
And I've seen tra, separate trash for condo associations, but, you know. That's minor.
Yeah.
One thing, two. Are you, you're still proposing shared septic?
We are, yes, cause it'll be a condominium.
Okay.
I mean, the alternative is eighteen individual septic systems for a small parcel like this, I, I don't know that that, I, I understand. Engineering concerns and, and operational concerns, but you're gonna have condominium association, it isn't just there for the septic system, it's there for. A whole host of other things that would be managing, maintaining this.
You're talking about the condo association?
They service the septic?
It would be, the condo association would be responsible for the shared septic system, correct?
And then they just back chats.
Be part of the, of each unit owner's, you know, common piece.
I, from my perspective. I would much rather see more than one shared septic, if you wanna do multiple shared septics, one for each of these. Building clusters, I mean, shared septics, the more houses that are on them, the more likely they are to fail. And. I really do not like the idea of a shared septic for all the units, that's my. My feeling on this, that's probably my biggest issue with this.
Can you elaborate on that? Like, why?
With the shared septic?
Yeah.
Well, you have. The only thing that you can control going down your. Well, the only thing you can control going into the septic system is nor, uh, wastewater use. Depending on, you know, other people, if they're not familiar with how septic systems work, they could be dumping grease, hair dye. Anything down the sink, and it's gonna cause the septic system to fail. And the cost to replace septic systems right now is through the roof, so.
And who's your source?
Well, it's the condo association, so it's just one of those things.
Have, have you done groundwater testing now?
Yes, yeah.
And how was that?
Um, it, it's, it's sandy soils, um, it's very good soils, um, groundwater was not a consistent, a problem, and so it would not be a race system, it would be. Uh, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head exactly what, what that was, but it was. It's not, as, as the risk of perjuring myself, it was, it was lower than such.
And I know that it's in purview of Board of Health. What you mean, is that right?
I don't.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't wanna overstep, but I'm just.
I mean, I, I know they're gonna size it for the number of bedrooms and everything, and you gotta go through all of Title V and all that, we, we get that.
And, and, and because of the shared system too, um, there will likely be, um, required inspections and maintenance. That performing on, if it's something that goes above and beyond what individual septic system can see.
What, what kind of system are you designing, do you know yet?
Um, I believe it would be a, um, a dosed presby system, is, is, is the, is the first pass of the idea. So there would be a septic, there would be a, a pump chamber that would, um, over, over the day, dose the, the fields, um. You're sure adequate, you know, separation, so it doesn't get a big burst. They would take showers in the morning.
And, any, um, discussion about putting maybe another one to the, to the north there, or no?
It, it hasn't been a discussion yet, um.
Is that okay if I chime in a little bit?
Absolutely.
Hi, uh, Amanda Cavalieri with Gary or in Howman. Um, as far as the shared septic systems go, um. They are used quite a bit, um, all over the place, and the Mass DEP has financial mechanisms. That are required for those systems, and like Mike was saying, there are routine checks. Um, and inspections that are required as part of these systems, so as far as, um. Useful Life, they do public information packets, uh, for all the homeowners as part of the homeowners association. So there are different vehicles, uh, for providing information to all of the residents that are, um. That are purchasing units there, and, um, the Board of Health, uh, does need to. Obviously approve the, um, the proposed designs for the septic systems. There are going to be reserve areas, we're just showing, you know, pictorially, just concept wise. The, the design plans, um, that are submitted. Uh, for peer review, will incorporate some preliminary layouts of these, um, design systems. But until we get comments and more feedback. From the, uh, from peer review, we won't do a full design of the, of the septic systems, but they will have to be vetted through the Board of Health. But Mass DEP does have financial mechanisms that are required for any shared septic system.
So Amanda, uh, is the reserve area in that, in the area of, that's depicted on the plan, is it in that area?
No, so this is just one of the spots, um, the septic system will have to be sized originally in the plans when we had the twelve units. Or the twelve buildings, there were two, um, boxes in these areas that showed the rough. Location of the system, and then two additional areas that showed reserve. So those spaces will be depicted on the updated design plans when we submit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I just wanna thank you for putting that sidewalk in all the way around, I really appreciate that. And I think we've come a long way from where you started. I mean, we went around and around in a whole circle, came back to the same spot. Really appreciate that. And I think this concept's really one of the best I've seen so far. Really appreciate your time and effort.
Yeah, I, it's my only comment as well as reiterate what he said, that I think this is a. A very good example of how an applicant and neighborhood and slining wood can all work together, I, I appreciate your efforts today.
I'm picturing grabbing past here, seeing the dumpster area, just down the streets, seeing the dumpster area. I don't think that was gonna work, you know, without significance.
Just platform, where, where?
Coming down the main road here, looking in, if I'm, if I'm just passing by this place. I'm looking in, and I see the visitor parking. Next, no, west, look right over the visiting parking, right to the dumpster area.
I, I, there's gonna, I mean, it's not shown on the concept plan, it will be, those will be landscaping.
No, 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 back up, back up. Hang on, I'll explain.
Uh, not me.
I drive down the street, look up there, what do I see?
It would be.
Okay, that's what I thought, I'm just, I'm just gonna point it out.
And, and, and to alleviate that, we can propose additional landscaping to provide screening there. Um, and other comments tonight have been to evaluate the maneuverability of that dumpster. Um, and possibly the alternative of providing, um, individual trash cans, and so. We'll be looking at that dumpster area, we'll take that concern into account of visibility, and making sure that it's not an eyesore. Um, in, in the next iteration of the design.
So, so, so dumpsters are usually a big point of contention after these projects are done. Um, it's either the enclosure, the gates break, you know, the guy has to get out and open the gates and, and. That pull up to the thing, and it's always a complaint, you know, crashes blowing out and everything, so maybe. You know, uh, maybe investigate individuals, try to pick up.
Yeah, we have recycling in.
We do have it available, I, I don't know, I don't know of any restrictions of going into a private project, so.
And you have the garages too, the barrels can be pulled in.
As someone who has had a chases recycling all over the neighborhood on a rainy day, I'd bother to have a dumpster guy to use, but, but I'll, I'll, I'll defer.
My other comment is that, um, you know, I do appreciate the. The improvement on the visitor's parking space. I do understand there's two in the driveway, two in the garage, but there's no place to park a car anywhere on that rotary. And I think you're gonna have issues with the density of that, there, there's no place to park a car, other than a driveway. Or in the garage, or in the visitor parking, and. Yeah, what'd you say, two bedrooms a pop, you know? One of those people can have three, three people over, and the, you know, they're gonna make. And the, you know, they're gonna make. I don't know how, you're gonna run into issues with parking, just around the cul-de-sac, I mean, any neighborhood around, you've got people that pull up to, pull up to a house. Or condo or whatever it is, and they're gonna park right somewhere and. I, I think, you know, with, with six buildings, it's, I'm still looking at that, I thought we were talking last time around, you know? Board was still thinking it was too tou- too tight through there and I, I, I speak for myself, I think it is still too, and trying to park in there is just. Visitor parking, I like, the mailbox situation across from the visitor parking, I like, um, but I still don't think there's. I, I, I think it's too, still too tight.
Unfortunately, the nature of these projects, you know, there's only so much room, you know, and, and. But I do have a question, so you have a twenty-two foot measurement here on the roadway going in, what's the measurement of the roadway around the cul-de-sac, doesn't say? You know why that is?
It's about thirty-three feet.
So, so when you have a cul-de-sac, uh, and you have. Uh, some green space in the middle in the winter, what happens is it's really hard to plow that. And you end up riding up on that and it gets narrower, you know, so I think the thirty-three feet is probably a plus, you know. Yeah, or the, you know, the wider width, because it does get smaller in the winter and Chris, you can probably, you're driving up on the. On the banks, but thirty, thirty-two feet is, is a pretty good.
It's a good width and then there's enough room if they're doing snow, putting the snow in a cul-de-sac, it's a pretty good size area and. Like, it's nowhere wrong, so hopefully they'll keep it, you know, loud enough, but. That gives, does give it a good width for the, to keep the turning radius.
So, so was the idea not to have, um, spaces closer to the entrance, like having a few more spaces there?
No, I like the, having the mailboxes there and have, you know, we talked about last time, having a parking place, you know, near, near. The mailboxes that you can pull off the side of the road and actually get your mail. And you wouldn't be blocking traffic coming in and out, but. You know, besides the mailbox, getting mailboxes, you know? Somebody's gonna come in here and wanna visit building three. Where, where are they gonna park, you know, the, the two, two? I'm picturing Sunday with a football game, somebody having a couple people over, where are they gonna park? So first of all, you get the people in the garage like you commented. Next person shows up, we grab the person, you know, with the, the parking space right next to the. Um, or in the driveway and maybe the next person gets the driveway and then the next person, or, you know? You're gonna make them walk all the way back up to the visitor parking area, or are they gonna try parking somewhere along in the rotary, so?
Could I just address that? I live in one of the, my sister does. And the condo association will limit you to who you're gonna be able to park. And it's up to you as an owner to make sure no one does, but they make you park on a road which is large. On a roadway, you, you're gonna walk a quarter mile, they don't care. That's the only way you come on, I think, but that's up to the owner. That's what I'm saying, that's how they limit it, so.
Is that a condition that they put in?
Condition, they put, they actually call their association a part of it.
Is that a condition you guys would be interested in?
In, in terms of parking and restrictions? Correct. That's fine, I mean, that's something that kinda, I mean. I don't know, I may have you live in HOAs, but the rules are often a whole lot stricter when the town comes up, in terms of what you can and can't do. In your own neighborhood, I mean. I, I'm just looking, we have thirty-six bedrooms and at least eighty-two parking spaces, that assumes only two. These, these driv- some of these driveways would hold six cars if we really needed to.
We get two, that's it. Grandma, don't come down, sorry.
So if we're gonna condition it, then that's the condition.
Yeah, exactly, that, that'll deal with it.
Or no parking signs all along. Circle.
Well, that's part of the condition.
A couple of things, I, I, I know I'm adding to it, but. Think obviously we should look into. On getting rid of the dumpster area, but it wasn't brought up that. Uh, believe it or not, people drive their trash. Down to the dumpsters and they're gonna be. Parking their car on that corner, getting out, bringing their trash in, so it's an awkward corner for. Ultimately cars to be parked on, uh, it could be eighteen trips a day. Um, and then the sidewalk coming in the driveway, I just wanna make sure that. When people walking down the sidewalk, when they're navigating the parking spaces in the mailbox area, they're not gonna have to walk out into the. The road looking down to get around the mailbox area, it's not really depicted, but the corner between. The mailbox area and the three visitor spaces.
Yep.
Someone walking down the sidewalk will be able to continue straight.
Understood, there, there would be markers trying to put it for, you know, off of an actual curb.
Yes.
And, and we, and we can better flesh out the, the sidewalk design in, in those areas.
Okay.
Can you go one step further?
Sure.
Can you put a crosswalk? Between the parking lot? Parking spaces and the mailboxes?
Absolutely.
Would that help?
Absolutely, there, there's enough room that the cars can pull in past the walking way.
I guess I wanna throw one more if you're done.
Yes, it's a school.
The bus pulls up in front. Next time you see a plank, can we kind of look at that? I imagine some of these are gonna be kids that go to schools on our school systems. And they're gonna be picked up in the front area, probably. Those are gonna be enough room for the kids, animal on the roads. I don't think the school bus is gonna drive up there.
No.
Some sort of area that the kids can.
You're looking for like some kind of a more formalized bus stop area.
It doesn't have to be, you know, a little bit smaller one, but I want a plan to say where the kids are gonna go. I want it to be considered.
We could certainly designate that on the plan, that, that's easy.
Yeah.
Speaking of that. I live in a cul-de-sac. A little bit bigger than this. And the parents drive their kids every day to the bottom of the hill. And it's only a, not even a third of a mile, quarter of a mile. And they're there waiting for them to pick them up every day. So we need to be prepared to allow for parking in the area. In the event we have kids. I've realized it's two bedrooms. And that may be, not be the traditional marketplace. But these are the actually condominiums for a lot of families. And moving out, so you, you may have for a short term. School age kids there. So we need to think of, um. Widing, maybe that, we have to look at some things. And again, I think it's kind of tight. I would love to see, um, one less building. I think we could maneuver things around, but I also wanna hear from the public as well. So unless any other board members have any questions, I'd like to open up to the public. Any questions? The woman in the back can hand that first here.
Um, sorry, with Audrey, two fifty-four Blackstone Street, I am kind diagonal to this whole. Um, development and I thank you for all the changes you have made, listening to most of what we've had to say. My concern is as they did with Maple Street, right, they shouldn't exist in what it looks like, and then they said, but then. Here's what it's gonna look like, you put those poles up, right? I'd like to see something done like that, because again, I'll say it again for the fourth time, when you come around that curve, it is a blind view. You're now adding trees that you can't see through the field. To see what's coming at you. I walk my dog a few times a day, dogs out front. Every time someone comes around that corner, they're on the other side of the road. Every single time. So I still have that concern and the mailbox is on the wrong side of the street. I'd like to see those mailboxes, our mailboxes, get moved. So that we don't have to cross the street.
Okay. Amanda, that is a. We can ask, i- 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 it is a, it's a government request. Yeah, it's a post-op incident.
It's a safety issue.
Yes, it is.
It's a safety, and they moved them on, on Center Street for that same reason.
That's similar situations.
It was either the further the deputy chief's concerns. Um, with that corner, you, you can't, you can't see coming around the corner, yes, you can from. From the North Street side, but from the, uh, one twenty-six side, you cannot see around that corner. Inside there, there's no place for snow, no place, I plowed for thirty-plus years. There's no place within that complex designated for snow removal. No place to put it. I can guarantee you. Their thirty-foot width will become a twenty-foot width within two storms. Guaranteed.
I'll do, just one question, I don't, you can pick this up. In the center of the cul-de-sac? I think that's one of their snow parks.
It's not enough. I, I can guarantee you, I, I used to plow Mount St. Charles.
Okay.
And if anybody that's ever been in the Mount St. Charles parking lot. And there's no place to put it, they actually, we had to actually literally pick it up, haul it to somewhere else, and that's the same. That scenario, as far as your dumpster is concerned, we live in the woods. You're gonna get all sorts of raccoons and other critters crawling around in that dumpster, that's just gonna be a health hazard. So, to me, a dumpster is completely out, it's trash barrel and it's a little bit more. Controlable.
Okay. We can, we can discuss that. But again, it's a condominium. I, I don't know.
It's, it's a health concern.
I, I.
The animals getting in the dumpster, dragging it all over the neighborhood. It's bad enough, we have people driving down, using the street as a dumpster as it is.
Alright. Are you, you writing that down?
I've got it.
Anyone else? Uh, gentleman in the back.
Christine Tassia, I just had a question with the sidewalks we've added. And I'm a designer, so. The driveways seem to be more curved now. Why is that? Is that? Intentional or is that? Cram everything like in the area.
Sure, some of them are more curved, because we now have the, you know, everything coming off of the cul-de-sac, so it, it's just that. Uh, some of them are a little bit longer, um, but, but that's why.
Okay, I didn't know that was just.
You had to do that to get the five, or get the six buildings back in there, is more or less what happened, right? Cause you had the, the, the other building was along the, the main access road and to, to do that, you had to tighten it up around the cul-de-sac.
So yeah, I, I think it's kind of tight. Another board member thinks it's kind of tight, well, let me go back to the other questions from the public.
Steven, my, Steven Ruin, uh, my thing is what you said, Bill, is that. We probably could use, lose at least two of the buildings. Uh, because that was our whole original. Question, the beginning of all of us. The density was just too much, no matter what their calculations were, it was just too much. Um, this is, these aren't single-family homes, these are three family, you know, three. Units in each thing, so I think if we lost two of them. That would widen everything up so that you could make everything work. You would have room for whatever, um, safety issues that they have.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, gentleman in the back.
Uh, Cody Spencer, two forty-four Blackstone Street, uh, I live, I grew up on this street in the house that I'm in, um. And obviously the sidewalk in there, cul-de-sac is fantastic, but it leads out to. No sidewalk, no streetlights basically from two ten Blackstone down to two fifty. Um, and we've requested streetlights in the past and the power company said they could not put them up, obviously, for conservation issues and such. Um, but. My problem growing up there was that I had to walk to school every day to the school, it was, it was too close for school transport to the middle school. So, obviously, you may have young kids at some point, and then. What are they gonna do when they gotta go to middle school and they can't have public transportation to the middle school? So the bus stop idea is fantastic, but they're gonna have to walk up Blackstone Street again. I know the traffic study may say one thing, but living there for twenty, not thirty years, it's. The way the cars drive on that street is most of the time respectable, uh. A lot of people are pretty good about it, people live there mostly, but it is a pretty major cut through. From one twenty-six to the opposite end of one twenty-six, four minutes. Especially with the current South Main traffic, people didn't know about that road and then all that construction. Shoved everyone down that street and now everyone uses.
And they haven't forgotten about.
Yeah, they haven't forgotten, exactly.
Are you, are you, are you gonna have any light poles anywhere near the entrances?
Um, well typically, the, the request from boards and butters is that there's no extra light leaving the site. Um, so our, our photometric design to this point. Has not included light leaving the site by design, that's usually the performance standard they were held to.
I understand.
Um, if, if it's the pleasure of the board that we put some street lights closer to the entrance, we can certainly look at that.
I think that may be a possibility, ju- just to look at. Um, speaking of lighting. I notice the driveways are kind of tight to another. Uh, is there any plan for post-lights on the end of the driveways?
Uh, post?
Post-lights?
You know, individual.
Individual lighting.
Um, it's not on, not on the plans now. I, I, I don't know that the, that the design has gotten that far along. But I, I think, you know, if you had individual post-lights on eighteen driveways, it. To, to your concern, it wouldn't necessarily be a good fit, so I imagine that. Um, it would probably be avoided.
Okay. Again, I echo a comment made by a fellow board member, one president. Ideally, if we could, um. Get somehow a second means of regress. To keep the fire department happy, it may mean losing a, um, a building. But I think at the end of the day, that, that could be. Maybe the best for all parties involved, and that's something we can potentially look at. The gentleman in the back?
Steven caller, just a casual observation, where, where is the middle driveway put in snow?
Probably the next to a yard.
That a little kind of aggressive.
I think imagine a snow blower. They may be blowing snow on one another's yard.
These projects are, are generally common area, they're not, um. They can put, you know. Pass and repass on all of them, it's not owned, you know, uh, so they would be probably blowing it on the green space right next door. And there's a management company that they hired to recommend to remove the snow, so. Gonna end up on the lawn at the end of the storm.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. The town is not gonna be responsible for any snow removal on, on this property at all?
No, no. Entirely private, private, private driveway would never be a public way, we wouldn't have, um, town snow removal.
I'd just say, fine, you, you gotta move things apart so you can have a place to put the snow besides as center circle, cause it, it won't work. I, I can guarantee that.
Okay.
It won't work.
Woman in the back?
Um, I, my concern was school buses. Um, drive, um, the amount of vehicles with these units that could be introduced to Blackstone and Wall Street. It's been my concern the whole time. I don't know how many people here have tried to walk on North Street or on Blackstone Street. On that end of it, but it's like taking your life in the hands, I'm not exaggerating. There have been times, the people that live right there know enough to drive slowly, that we have taken, using everything. Okay, sure, I was saying that people that live in the neighborhood right there. The immediate, no, keep it down, you know, go slow and everything, but. It is extremely difficult. Because it's used as a cut through, which has been mentioned many times, and people are in a hurry to go, get to work. Come home from work to do this and they hit the gas sometimes going down there. And have to like walk up on someone's lawn with day out of the way. So the fact that there are no sidewalks there right now is a big concern with me. Kids that, I live on Steven Road, which is a little further up. So that we have kids like high school, middle school kids that all walk to school there, but the sidewalk. Stops at Steven Road. Right there on Blackstone Street, right off there, that's, and there are people, there are kids, I know right down Blackstone Street, I know who they are. That walk to school or get driven to school or whatever. So I have a lot of concerns about increased vehicle traffic, we already have tons of that, of, of area. And expect, especially down in that area, down there, I, I talk all the time about, I go to Milford a lot. And I have to take a left back onto that road to go down Blackstone Street from North Street. And for a vehicle, it's really difficult at different times of the day to make that turn, it's extremely sharp. It's not just a forty-five degree turn. And my, I'm thinking of. All the increased traffic, I'm thinking of kids, if any of these people have kids in their condo, doing that stuff. It just seems like, um, there aren't enough safety measures in place for that area. You know what I mean?
I, I understand. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. I have the unfortunate luck that I live right across the street where the road comes out. I would like to see, agree with the fire department. If they could make a horseshoe somehow.
Okay.
So inside of Holland. And that, if you have extra snow, I know where that, what's gonna happen to it. Push it right across the street and block me in.
Okay. We will try to.
That, that's illegal, by the way. To push it across a public way.
Well, well aware.
Yeah.
We'll try to revert that, sir. Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Recently checked with the police department. To find out how many calls they've gotten because of cars going around school buses. Or anything like that, like. Calls about, you know, people speeding on Blackstone Street or has anybody ever looked into that? Because I know yet yesterday I was out, a car was going really slow down the street. I stopped to find out why he was going so slow. And a pickup literally came right around, right on that corner, went right around him and I was like. The guy was still driving. He wasn't stopping. He didn't have his, have his on or anything. And I was like, so have we ever like looked into like police laws of? And like those type of calls?
I believe that the traffic study. Might have addressed that, but we can try to get that updated.
Yeah, uh, traffic study did address, um, you know, traffic conditions, accident rates and it will be updated. Uh, based upon, you know, half the density that the original traffic study looked at.
Okay. So yeah, we looked at the traffic study.
Oh.
And we'll make sure that the police department provides some updated information.
And I, and I'd like to add too, that, that these residents will also be a member of the community. You know, th- these won't be transient drivers. They'll also be living in this area and walking safe. Safe conditions as well. So it's, it's not gonna be more cut through traffic. It is gonna be, you know, they, they live there.
I, I, I appreciate that. But having, um, gone through. Um, South Main Street construction. It, it's no longer a secret. And I, I think what we're gonna look at earlier. The neighbors are conscious of what they're doing. And people don't, do not live there. And it's not your problem, although you're the attitude. Try to rush to it. Every, everyone's been arrested. No matter where they're going. And no matter how much time they have. It's just, it was second nature. Perhaps there's additional signage. We can put out there, we can look into that down the road. But, um.
Mr. Chairman, just add, one thing we're gonna ask our, our traffic consultant to do. Is to look into some traffic calming measures in that area. This area, I think there's been a few. Um, antarit elements and, and some subdivisions off of that, but in terms of really looking at these roadways, only anybody's really done that in this area. Um, there, there may be some simple fixes, you know, simple signs, speed signs. Uh, looking at the stop signs that might make a big difference in this area that we can certainly look at. Uh, you know, and again, I, I've mentioned this before. Linda Way right up the street here has eighteen single family homes, uh, four more bedrooms. So I mean, in terms of population wise, ours will be about half. Um, so traffic impacts, I mean, I think if you look at that, wh- what, what, what are the, what's the traffic impact of that neighborhood right up the street? You know, I think we would be less, um, just, just putting it in perspective in terms of number of units. We're exactly the same, we have as many bedrooms.
Okay. From a, a risk measure standpoint. Uh, it may not last long. Uh, you look at simple fixes. Believe it or not, there is now treaty painted. On crosswalks and make it look like a speed bump.
Mm-hmm.
Have you heard of that?
I have heard of that, yes.
And I don't know how, how long it works for. But it, it does get people's attention.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something, you know, we, we did adjacent to Center West. So unless there's anyone else on the, uh.
Zoom?
On Zoom.
That one, we'll shoot.
Still, it still just seems odd to me, the shoe horn. A condo association or homeowners association with three unit homes in the middle of the woods surrounded by single family homes. You mentioned Linda Way, which is all single family homes. I'm sure they probably didn't get nearly as much pushback. But it's still just, it seems odd to me. It, it, it doesn't seem. Going back to the first few meetings, fitting characteristics of it. And I, I, I appreciate everything they've done. It's, it's a great improvement over what our first meeting was. Uh, I unfortunately couldn't make it to the neighborhood meeting, but it's. Since someone uneasy feeling.
Alright, I thank you for your comment. Um. I think we need to, um. What's the date on this?
So their, um, decision deadline day is December fifteenth. Um, I think it, it's probably up to the applicant if they wanna continue to revise this more before we go to peer review. Or do you wanna send it like this to peer review? Cause it seems like there's still a few more things.
I mean.
Uh, but because it's, it's gonna cost some money for the peer reviews, so however you want to move forward.
Understood. I mean, from our perspective, the things that we've heard tonight. Um, we're comfortable with addressing in updated site plans. I mean, we're at a point where we're comfortable moving forward. With submitting updated site plan and moving to peer review. I, I think some of the concerns we've heard from fire department and. Um, and others we can address through the peer review process and updated plans. Um, it was mentioned DPW was gonna look at the, the water flows in the area. You know, w- w- we did a flow analysis. We submitted it and DPW responded with, yep, we're gonna have our peer reviewers look at it and, and, and we'll let you know. So I mean, that issue, we're, we're sort of at a stopping point with working with the town, so. Um, we're, again, we're, we're comfortable at this point, you know, making a few more tweaks, turning this into our updated site plan and, and moving forward with peer review.
Based on this proposal, Ben?
Correct.
Okay.
And then that, that's the board's to choose us.
I'd like to see one, one more building. I don't think I'm really moving.
Well. To that point. Yeah, I think. I don't think it makes sense to keep revising the concept. If you wanna move forward, I would say move forward and then. Once the site plans come in, we can get some feedback with stormwater peer review and such and. It makes sense to start whittling some things back. That makes sense.
Okay.
Right? I, I.
Yeah.
You're glaring over there, Phil.
No.
You're concerning me.
No, I've, uh, I think I've expressed my opinions.
Yeah, they took out that one other building in the front. You could almost do a horseshoe right there.
You could, that was.
Exactly.
No, it might.
That would.
My partner at the last speed.
Yeah.
And I think that. Moving forward too, that's really gonna come down to the, the traffic study as well to see if that's feasible, so, you know. To get there, I think we. Let's stop with the concepts. Let's move forward.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
You know what I mean? If that makes sense.
So based on doing a peer review and hearing that. Three of the board members would like to see. Uh, we adjusted the building. What timeframe are we looking at?
Uh, one more thing before we go there. How, what's, what's the status of conservation and where, like where they're at with, what's on the site? Just, I think that might be important to note. Do you urge you guys not just, how's that?
We, 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 we're on hold. We've been continuing while we adjust this with the impact in terms of, of what the notice of intent that we submitted.
Perfect, okay. Um, so timeframe, we can. We have the ninth or we have the fourteenth of December. Which it's gonna take, you know. I would think maybe probably by the fourteenth because the thought was Brian, and I don't know if this works for you. We get the scope sent to them. They obviously can communicate to you and then we could hopefully, I'd like to have everything back for the fourteenth of December.
Hmm.
Back and forth.
Yeah, we're looking at almost two months.
I think.
Less than. More than a month.
Get the funds and.
Not quite too much turnaround.
Right.
To get this done.
Right.
It's probably gonna take some time just to turn around the site plan.
It is. Right, right. So there's all those factors, right?
Yep.
So I entertain a motion. We continue this to, uh, December fourteen.
Second. Second.
I have a second. And don't that, do I need to specifically request a peer review?
I know.
Uh. I don't think we need to move that period. So what we do.
And I think they need to submit a revised site plan for. Right before we, we, we're not gonna have a peer review concept.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Probably wait till the site plans come back and then. We'll move forward, cause there's gonna be peer review, I imagine.
Yeah.
Stormwater zoning.
Traffic.
Traffic is gonna be key.
Yeah.
So bring the back the new drawings. Let's look at it, then send it off to peer reviews.
Correct. Yeah, so I think even the comments though, you know, potentially whittling down a building, getting some of that peer review comments back. That's really gonna solidify where we can move forward with this.
Well, how do you, how do you make a motion should be made?
To continue this to December fourteenth?
Yes.
And. I mean, I imagine once you resubmit, you'll be. Okay to contact with our, you know, town staff to get the peer review going.
Would, would, would it be possible? I don't wanna speak my end here to put them under the gun, but would it be possible for us to continue to the ninth? We've got our stuff in and we're ready to go. We can turn it in. It'll save us some time. We may not be able to meet that, but, but if we can, if you're meeting on the ninth anyway, um, you know, I, I would, I would. Ask you to continue to the ninth. We've got our plans all. We can do everything just described on the ninth. The fourteenth might be more productive.
I.
Can I ask, um. How many times have we? Continued this without an actual conversation?
With peer review?
No, without. I, I, we, we, you can see the neighbors that are coming out, so the next one I wanna schedule, I would want. Pretty assured to say that we're not gonna continue. Because everybody's coming out. You can see them all here. I'd like to make sure that it's an achievable timeline and I think I just heard that, you know. That was, the ninth was not. Something that was a hundred percent you could make it. So to me, it feels like it shouldn't, it should be past that. Because you've got a lot of public interest. The public interest needs to continue and every time we have a continuance with no discussion because we're not ready. I, I'm, I, it upsets me that the neighbors come out and we're not prepared for it because. We don't have the drawings.
We always get the continuous that.
And you guys have asked for continuance already, if I'm not mistaken, on this, right?
And to that point, I think if we continue this to December fourteenth. And I would recommend aiming to get information into Town Hall for November ninth. And get the peer review rolling December fourteenth when all the neighbors are back. We can start, we can actually discuss the peer review.
I think that was our intent was to just not wait until December fourteenth to then get the peer review law rule.
I would add.
No, that was my concern. And that's why I raised that. That was my concern is that we were gonna wait. And then start the peer.
No.
No. You wanna get the peer review going.
That's what we said.
Got it.
Six clusters of three buildings each, eighteen two-bedroom. Mike, you're on.
Yeah.
He was talking on. He's an open mic.
Okay.
So continuing.
Yeah, I, I like to look at December fourteenth.
That's fair, as, as, as that. My concern was only that we were gonna wait until the fourteenth to start.
No.
No.
No. They weren't there by the.
That's fine. I can totally understand that next best.
As I said, I don't think a month is enough time.
It's not.
No, I, I think two months is real close. But we should be able to get that. By the fourth.
Yes.
That works. Sounds great.
Alright.
They'll move.
And for seven o'clock. So. So a motion to continue the hearing for North Street to December fourteenth at seven o'clock.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Rob eye.
Phil eye.
Nick eye.
Good motion, Senator.
Thank you very much.
It's.
Thank you very much. We still have someone more.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Long Gate, Rob. Long Gate. Okay. I know, I know. I know, we're getting there. We're getting there. Alright, let's keep going. We're getting there. Hi Steve. I apologize. We're good. Keep moving. Alright. Bye, Nick. Okay. Okay.
Is, uh, Long Gate, Rob, including Harry Alton. Townhouse dwelling.
In accordance with the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws, section two forty dash one oh one. Special residential use, townhouse dwellings, inclusionary housing. The applicant Elite Home Builders LLC and owner TRG Family LTD Partnership. Propose where the eleven affordable two-bedroom units will be on site by lottery with associated improvements at thirty to local shoot. In Bellingham, approximately fifty-seven plus or minus acres of land shown on assessor's map. Ninety-three dash twenty-two zone agriculture and suburban.
Thank you. Attention of the public, this is a new public hearing. Like have a motion open to hearing? Five seconds.
Second.
All in favor, please signify and say.
That is right.
Phil eye.
Phil eye. Nick eye.
That motion passes.
Can I just quickly just give everybody where we're at with this that?
Absolutely.
So, okay, so the planning board rendered a decision back on December seventeenth of twenty twenty. Um. You do the development. We're at the stage right now with, and Tim can also explain what's happening now. It's there at the point where they have to now do the inclusionary housing that was part of the permit that you had given to them back in twenty twenty. That's written within your current decision. So they're at this point to say to you, this is where we're gonna put. These units within the existing development that was already permitted within their decision. So that's what this is about.
Okay. Amy, could you remind us about how many?
How many were parted out? Let me take. I think it was eleven, but then, yes. So those are gonna be dispersed within the site. Um, you have within, they actually supplied a really good packet for you to see. Uh, there's different. Housing within. The packet, which is, it's broken up into, I think, an A, B, and C. Um, so, um, they have that within your packet to show where those will be.
I can answer a couple of them. Number one.
It's nearly on site?
Well. As you know, that, um, I did seek. To do off-site housing and I, and I met with, uh, a commissioner. For a while, I don't know. Beginning of summer. Um, he gave me a list of abandoned housing, which I had looked at. And I did visit eleven different sites in my town, of which. I think every single, almost every single one of them were occupied. So it didn't really look like a good fit. It was one house. It looked like it was a, a lot of disrepair, but there were vehicles and there are people there, so. It's still, still could be potentially done and that's what they looked at with, uh. Housing for people with disabilities and, and. All the options that I'm talking about are options that would be counted. Under the state's subsidized housing inventory, so. I, I, that's, I'm gonna predicate it by saying that. So that was one option and that I looked at was abandoned housing. The other option that I had talked to you about before with the housing authority is something that I looked at. Three years ago when Monique was in charge of the housing authority and she'd say, stated to me at that time that. You know, they had just, uh, gone before a town meeting for funding, for a piece of land they owned. They wanted to build some affordable housing. And I said, well, that's great because I'm gonna be hopefully doing a project in town and that would be a great fit. And I could provide the affordable housing on that piece of property. Well. I did meet with the housing authority, um. Many times, um. Three, four, five times, I don't remember how many, but, and, and we did talk about all different concepts. And we have changed that several times. We did come up with a final one that. Well, Jim, Jim could speak to that. They, they unanimously approved it, so they. They have the piece of land. They have a builder that's willing to provide housing for them, um.
And the desperate need. We have a fifteen hundred person waiting list. We have people living on the second floor that have walkers, cause we do not have any way to get them up or down. They wanna get down to the first floor. This is a perfect solution. We have land, we have a building. And we have needs, I don't see the problem.
So, but, but however that I propose, the two of them would be truly affordable housing. The housing within our developments, uh, will have the building affordable housing at nine hundred feet. Nine hundred square feet, but according to, I don't know, who sets those rules. The housing that we build in our developments have to look exactly like the other luxury housing, so we're really building luxury affordable housing. That we're selling for twenty fifty thousand, and, and people are able to manipulate their income stream or not. Uh, 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 and we've seen all, we've seen all different scenarios, in any event. The, the option that I had worked out with the housing authority, I thought was a really good win, win for both parties. I was gonna be providing housing on their property, free of charge, eleven units, they're gonna be giving them, and they're gonna be controlling who lives in them. And their needs, and they would be living in them for, they set the price, what ends the price to them?
The, the price is, uh, thirty-five to forty percent of your income.
Whatever your income.
Whatever your income is, to live in those parts.
So we're really satisfying a much needier part of the population, if I work with the housing authority, now. We've been building, this is my partner, Leo, uh, the seller. He's a young guy, and he's building like crazy, working crazy out there, and he says, Steve, we gotta get the affordable housing, we gotta affordable housing. So we're going down this road of building, and, and we need to get releases from you with the occupancy permits, which we. We posted a bond with you, which we moved to bond law secondly, but, um, we need to get this out of the way, and we know that you wanna get it done. Um, sooner rather than later, because I'm sure these builders have come, finished the whole project and leave and don't require them for affordable housing. We certainly do not intend to do that, so in any event, we need releases from you, we're, we're looking for twenty-seven units, which is. Twenty-five percent of our development, still got a lot of, there's still a lot of eggs in the basket there, um, so we need releases from you, but meanwhile. Working with the housing, um, authority, it really wasn't progressing that fast, and we need to get releases. So we filed all the paperwork to do inclusionary within the net development. Even though that's really not what we wanna do, for a variety of reasons, um, but in any event. Um, we filed that, and if the board is not in favor of us building, uh, working with the housing authority. Then we're building with the development, we will provide affordable housing, one way or the other, we know we are obligated, we will, but, um. Jim had asked to come in, uh, to talk to the board, he brought another member, it was Board Kate, housing authority is, was a hundred percent in failure, that's. The, uh, this, um, of this, uh, project yet.
Your idea of affordable housing is way different than my idea of affordable housing. It's nice to say, we're, we're selling this, you can rent here for four thousand dollars a month, but we're gonna give you a break, we're gonna give you twenty-five hundred. The people I'm talking about are living on eighteen hundred a month, maybe two thousand if they're lucky, they can't afford. What, what's out there, we've got people in this town living in tents or in their cars, and this is twenty twenty-three. This land was donated to the town in nineteen ninety.
Excuse me, let me clarify.
Please do.
All right, I was in the housing authority for approximately twelve years, I was chairman for several years. That land is owned by the state.
Okay, except which, and, and this is where I have.
We've had this discussion several times.
I understand that, that you say that, but the affordable assessors say that the town owns it.
I've had several conversations and will get an opinion. When we tried to put housing there, we were told that it's, um, owned by the state. For us to access it, it has to be considered exit, access land and offer to other departments. We've had that discussion with Jim several times.
Correct.
But I'm telling you, it's not, it's not new to you.
I'm sorry?
But I'm telling you, we've said before.
We did a title on it, I thought it was owned by the town, but I, I. I, I need direction from the board, the board tells me they don't wanna do that, that, that I'm not gonna spend time and money researching and working on it. If you, if you tell me that you like the idea, I will work on it, and, and I'll get title, and I'll do it all legally, I won't, I won't cut it in corners, it hasn't. We'd have to develop.
I, I, I understand.
If, if the board's not in favor, then, then we won't.
I'm not saying we're, we're not in favor, so, I'm just saying, we've, we've had this discussion, I've reached out to Jim. Past experience on the board, that for us to build on that, for the, the housing body. It's, it's owned by the state.
And I think right now, we are at a crossroads where the board, the board had a decision that you hooked up hold, and there's timelines.
Tonight, you were coming here to put everything on site, we had to discussion a couple of months ago, to put it on site. So, you know, we're a little bit of a cadaver right there, is we don't wanna prevent you from, um, selling your, your units. But, you know, we, we can't release anything until we have. Inclusionary housing, it's, it's, it's taking a long time.
We, we're looking at twenty-five percent of the development to be released tonight, ideally.
I understand that.
Yeah, no, we posted a bond, and again, if, if it's, if it's not for its pleasure, we will do them on site, we're not, I'm saying, we're not saying, we're not gonna do it on site. What we're saying is, we believe it's a better option, we have support from housing authority, if the town, if it wants us to put them on site, we'll put them on site.
I just wanna clarify something, I'm new to the housing authority.
Okay.
I've only been there a short time.
Okay.
And. There's a, there's a new thing going on in town to make the town senior friendly and dementia friendly.
Yep.
Which, it, it, I'm on for that, but. You say the state owns it, the board of assessors say, we own it, who owns the land? Who could sit, sit here and say one hundred percent certain that this person owns the land?
I think that would be really a separate discussion that you'd have to research, like outside of this, cause right now. It, it would be, right, and I, I think the board has to move forward with, it's really up to the applicant to have to move forward and make a decision, because. We're at the crossroads where Tim's gonna have to issue things, and we need to think of how to do this, because it is within their decision.
So can I ask a question, so, um, twenty-five percent, so how many of the units, you have closings coming up?
Right, right. Right.
Eleven sold in nine, nine units closing this year.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so you need, um, to identify, at what percentage was your decision, uh, how many did you?
I think before we get an office, we have to have.
So you filed for the inclusionary, that's a project, you just haven't identified it yet, correct?
We, we identified, and we said, uh, that the state has to approve that as well.
Oh, okay.
We did, we'd receive, we did receive approval from, uh, from the, it was for the AI, AIU, which the selectmen had. Approved that at a prior meeting with a signature, we, so we have that, that's already been signed.
All have to be designated, um.
Yes, and we did that already.
We already have that, yes, the chair of the select board had signed that, or, or.
We still could do the other option of, it was a board's pleasure, but if it's not your pleasure, we won't do it.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not our pleasure, it's just that we, we don't have time.
Yeah, if you'd have done this before, would have been, I love the concept, I really do. But you're gonna put us in the bind, we're, we're just gonna hold up the project, we don't wanna do that.
You could give us a few, a lot releases and, um. And we could work with it, but.
But you already get title of that land.
We only need, you know, we can, we can research a time, matter of fact, I think we, I think I had in turn did research, the thing is. This been going on for so long that I forgot what we actually did, but I believe we did do a title search, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I don't wanna say that.
So do any of these units that you have ready to close, are they designated?
The one, uh, the, the one that we designated is the unit sixteen, that's gonna, it's not, we just framed that one.
Yeah. I mean, the board could most certainly, um, adjust their decision and, um, put a. Drop that, you know, allow them some closings, and with the identification of the units that are designated for affordable. And give them a little more time to research the thing where it won't hold up closings, but, you know, I mean, they're, they're, they're designated now, and they, they're well aware of that. If they don't make this happen.
Yes.
They're gonna have to, you know, no more, no more COs, until they, you know, uh, start producing some, um, affordable. So, I mean, it's up to the board, you have the, you have the ability to do that.
Which is Jim. Um. Based on his discussion with you, and our discussions in the past. We assume that tonight we're gonna be onsite units, and then we will look at where they're gonna spread out, um. On, on your site, and then driving by, you could not determine which were inclusionary houses. Housing units, and which were not, so we came in here this evening, based on that premises.
Now, we could build eleven luxury affordable housing, we could do that, we've done that on the developments, we can do it here, if that's. What the board's budget is, that's what we do, but we do have a housing authority that wants it, they have the land available, it's such a win-win that I just. I just thought we'd just talk about it one more time, but if it's not, the board doesn't wanna do it, we won't do it.
You know, I mean, they're trying to last ditch effort. Try to provide, you know.
We're just making such a great idea of it.
I love it, yeah, I love this.
A lot of new people involved in this, I never knew anything about this till six months ago.
Okay.
I can give it to the next, you give me some, some release, give me a little bit of role, I can have a title search done, I can, in the next meeting, I'll provide. I'll provide that, and if, and if you don't wanna delay a title, then, then it's, it's dead.
Question is, how long in the state to construct?
I can have it constructed, so, within a year.
Tim, could we run this parallel, is that what your thought is? Yeah.
No, I don't have an idea.
Okay. So why, why are we here, like, if this plan was in motion, why are we at this crossroad that we? We have all the approvals, everything's set to go, but what, like, what's, what's the timeframe that we'd have to execute on? So we're here probably because the housing authority is trying to make a last-ditch effort to try to provide.
I wasn't on the train before, I, I get that, and I wanna push this, but this, but this was raised months ago.
No, and, and I, I'm not saying, but why are we at this point, like, and what would have to happen to get it, like? What, if we said, okay, fine, let's look into the, the housing authority option. Are we, are we talking a month, are we talking three months, what do we need to do, and where are our approvals now, and, you know what I mean? That would assume that.
I could have, I could have, uh, a definitive answer to the ownership at the next meeting.
I would think, Steve, we need more than that, just to be, because we are at some crossroads, like, could you, I mean, I don't know.
The last time we taught, had this exact same conversation, we did, and we were talking about you being creative, proposing, putting. You were talking about taking, you know, if it was eleven houses, putting some dollar trust, but it was something you were gonna come up and create and come to us with. And that's kind of, and then we got this, so we were, we don't, we were saying that you were gonna move forward with it, and come up with their plan. And then present the plan to us.
Well, I.
And I, I guess, you, if you say, you kept saying that if the board doesn't like it, you know, we'll just go forward with it, but. You know, I think you've heard a couple of numbers, and I was certainly part of, with Dennis's point, was that we need more affordable housing in town, and. Love to hear a concept that we got, I, I, I just, I, I mean, I just, when do you need, when do you need the approvals? So, when's the deadlines for?
We, we need this, if you guys not gonna be able to extend or give us some release, we're gonna have to move forward. With the decision, and we're gonna put it on the site.
You can't do a title, you can't figure out the title before.
No, no, I need this, we really need.
When, when's your close?
We, the close, it's, it's like tomorrow, if I can, I, I hope to have power tomorrow, and we're gonna be closing. It's like as fast as we can, so it's. So, so if.
Yeah, I wish we had been here.
This was, this was three or four months ago.
We were. And we had kind of.
We understand that, so if that's the case, we'd just like to get the approval for, to be in the project, and, and we move forward with.
And I think where it gets tricky is there's also state requirements that with our decision, we have, we have to make sure that, and Steve, I love your idea, don't get me wrong there, I love it. But, but the bottom line is, we've got numbers, we have to also, within our inclusionary housing, when we submit this to the state, we need to keep our levels. Where they need to be, and that's why we're doing inclusionary housing, so with this idea, which is a fabulous idea. We would have to also have verification that those units that, if you were to look at those other options, would in fact qualify for that, and I think right now. Where we have the paperwork with the state doing this other option, there has to be a lot to be in place to do that, and I think if we were a year back. To look at this, it, we're down to like the tenth hour, and, and that's the question that.
For three years, I've been trying, and I don't, I don't seem to be getting.
Yeah.
Through with it, try to sell that to other developers.
Yeah, yeah.
That's credits.
Yeah.
It's such a win-win, you know, it moves. All I need is you guys to say, yes, do it, and, and then, and then, if I have an obstacle, if I can't do it, and that's different, but right now. I don't see any obstacles.
We did that, though, we, we said, come for the plan, but we did that with you, you were here, same, the same exact thing, that wasn't tomorrow. You need the, you needed the RINs.
It wasn't tomorrow, but I do have a.
Which is, how many hours from now?
No, I, I do have a plan, I have friends right over there, and I, and I could, I could go out and show them to you.
But we, we can't, we can't execute it, though.
I think we just, we move forward, aside, yeah, I think we're gonna go.
Well, so.
We, we have customers that are waiting to move in, so we need like eleven houses to close, and, you know.
So, uh, I'll mention your opinion on that. We, we authorized the release of the occupancy permits for some number that they need, but we have. A timetable in which all of this stuff has to be done, right, is that something that?
Yeah, I mean, they have a lot more units, and it's not like it's.
Right, so, so if we said, we'll give you the twelve occupancy permits, will you come back? December first, with a fully permitted, then the state approves everything else, plan.
It's not enough time, for, for, for approval is not enough time.
We can't stay, we can't get state approval for anything within the next movie, even, even inside the house, inside the units. The state doesn't approve anything, I, I, what I can have for you, is the next meeting, if you say yes. Do I have a title, I'll have a title certificate.
Whether or not you can even do it on that site, is that what you're saying, that's what he would have?
Well, that's what's being questioned, but to me, there was never question until just recently, whether, whether they, they had the ownership.
The same conversation we had, we're on the record here, we had that conversation, he had the same conversation that he was on the housing board before. And that it was state property, it was the same. You might be, but, and you might be, but that's a fair conversation.
Jim has told you in one of the cases. That the ownership of this property is by the state, in partnership with the, uh, Town of Bellingham Housing Authority. To do the development on this land, has to be given surplus property. Offered other agencies. And then it can, that can be done. I had a great time on the housing authority, I, I see the need, what we're coming in, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, literally, the last, last hour.
If you wanna, if we send house, so, link releases, like I said, I've got a hundred houses to build there, and I'm, I've been looking for like twelve of those. So, there's, there's plenty of leverage, if you wanted to give it, next meeting, tell me what you want made accomplished by then. Um, I, I can't get the proof from the state, but I can have plans drawn, I can.
I don't think it's unreasonable to do it with the number of units that he has, but I mean, it's up to you guys, you, you guys said, you did put it forward in your decision. Um, you know, there is, you have plenty of leverage here, it's not like you don't, and he has designated the units.
Yes, he has.
So, I mean.
And we don't wanna stop and stall it.
I mean, that, it's up to the board, I mean, but you make it clear right now that, and whatever number, that's it, you know, I mean, he has a. Whole lot of units to build, it's not like, it's not like you're not gonna get it. How many units right now would you be looking for, and what percentage of that would we eat, if it was a? Less than ten percent, so ten percent of ten, of eleven, so. I don't know, brainstorming here, you put, you write a check for two houses and put it in a bank account.
I don't know.
An X grow or something like that, so, so next meeting, and then we make a decision.
But we, we have a bond document we have to deal.
Can't we continue this, like, a month, could we continue this a month? But could we continue, can we continue, continue it? Release them, but make a motion. To, that he could continue to do research on this other option. And bring back something in a month, is there a way we could do both of these so that the board gets what they need for cover? Is there a way we could do that?
Well, we got flexibility, like Debbie said, why not? Also, it is the timing thing. You know, I, that's all I'm saying, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm. To be honest with, so that, just to give you a little background, I don't know how many members have, have, uh, visited the site. I mean, they're doing everything, they're up to date with everything they've done, DPW, uh, the sewer, you know, it's a pretty big project. They had to pump sewer across country, you know, I, I get the, uh. Yeah, I mean, they've done everything, it's really coming out nice, um, you know. Uh, Bill, I know you've been there, uh. They've done everything that town has asked, uh, you know, they're, they're trying to provide something that's, um. You know, that the, that the housing authority is, is really trying to push.
Unfortunately, I just think everything for the housing authority. Came together too late.
Yeah, I get that, I get that, um. Again, they have a whole bunch of units that you, you can just, you know, if you don't want to do it, you don't have to, but. They have a bunch of units that, that they still have to finish.
Are their designs with the, with the housing authority? That they've been reviewed, proved this.
It's not a submittal yet, but. No, I haven't seen a concept.
We have no, no neighbor in part. Now, here's my cadenture.
Yeah.
There'd have to be a financial fiscal analysis of that. What each units are worth with whatever you're proposing, there has to be, because when this was originally designed, there has to be a component of the fiscal. Analysis of those units, it's a little bit more than just a plan. Yeah.
And here we are, you know, again, at the last minute. What my concern is. What we do tonight. Put some onsite. And unfortunately. Prevents the. Possibility of something on property that is, um. On my escape. And deed it over to the housing authority. Once we get rid of some of these inclusionary housing. It may not be as viable. For the housing authority to do something, if we're talking five units. Or six units.
Because the units right now that are established within the development, when those get sold, we know they have to go back at that value, so there's. Things that we have to confide with, with the state requirements, that unless this is equal and comparable. We just don't know that, there's a lot of unknowns with this, and. That just worries me, to be honest, because I don't want to put your current. Your current develop in jeopardy.
Nope.
For a project that may not come to fruition, and I think what you want to do is a wonderful concept, is there a discussion we could have outside of this project? Would maybe something else down the line? I just think, just be very careful, because you don't want to jeopardize your current project.
Can I have first suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I think we're gonna have to make a decision tonight. To the gentleman on the, um, housing authority. I'd like to set aside some time at a future meeting.
Yes.
For you to come to us. Present your idea on what you have on Center Street. So as we have further developments coming down the road. We can look at Center Street and look at inclusionary housing. As you have other developments come down the road. Who would get merged including that? Okay, is, is that fair?
I guess it is.
Okay.
Just, I, I still don't understand what needs to happen, like, the, I don't understand the process, so. If you were to explore the, the option of the offsite. You would have to do X, Y, and Z, you know what those X, Y, and Z is?
I, I was looking for the green light from the board to say do this.
All right. All right, so X, Y, and Z. Will take how long? In your estimate?
Months, not years, months.
Four months, five months?
There'll be available to move in?
Just stay a little slower.
Put approval on paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, 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 I would, I think we'd have all those units built before, before half of our development was done.
So, this is what I'm thinking. I mean, we got a whole bunch of units that we can always come back to and leverage occupancy permits. If we have to.
Move into the other project.
If we have to, but we designate, so it's sort of a two-step thing. You give me the eleven or whatever you need now, we pick a date for you to come back with concrete affirmative. Goals and accomplishments of, of, you know, we did this, we're gonna do this, and this is the deliverable for, for this hearing. And then we reassess at that point, and if we have to, and maybe we do it tonight or some other night. You know, I, I'm not, I see the proposed allocation, I'm not thrilled with all the. Affordables going in the middle of the year, I think we have to look at the spread. Of how that would be plan B, if you can't get your accomplishment now, because I do think. It, it better align with the town's needs to have. This more affordable, affordable than this, and I don't think there's much exposure by. Because there are a whole bunch of other things that we can leverage. Get it, so if we give you eleven today. You come back January first with concrete, nothing else to look into. It's been submitted to the state, or it's, it's going to be submitted to the state by. November first, and you report back to us. I think that, I think the town is better served that way.
I agree with you, Brian, but my worry is, and you know, you guys can absolutely do what you want to do. The state requirements for what you need for affordable, that we've already received from the state to give them what he needs now. That's already in place, so to undo all that. It's a process, and I just, my worry is, I don't want to put them in jeopardy, and if, if. If they're okay taking that risk, and you guys want to do that, then that's totally fine, but I know that Jim has advised several times. That this, it should have been done a year ago.
This is a self-inflicted.
It, it is, and I just think the board needs to know that, and, you know, I just think. That we are at the tenth hour and just be very careful with what we.
We hold up.
It is.
I, I do a lot of, I am strictly a residential voter, I do a lot of residential voting, I build apartments, I build condominiums, I build single-family homes. I build group homes, I build affordable homes, I, I've done a lot of different guys, I've worked with the state in a lot of different ways, we've done forty Bs, so. We've got a good amount of experience, but there's always more to learn, always another. Something around the corner, so I'm not saying, I don't have all the answers, but I have a lot of experience doing that, and so. And I know that the group homes all get, they get full cover, uh, credits, I know the affordable housing. How the rental pot goes, I know how that works, and it's certainly all doable, it's all doable.
So, if you can, if you can submit, if you can tell me, I can submit an application to the state by November first, December first, we'll come back. We'll tell you what the, or give you a status, and then whenever the state renders a decision. And that we can evaluate what the best approach is. Then, let's do that, right?
I just, I just don't, I just don't think, I think we should move forward, Steve, yeah, let's just move forward, yeah, let's just move forward.
I was gonna say, it's too bad.
Yeah, it, it's, it's just, I, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere, and I, I think we need this, so just, let's just move forward with this. Yeah, I know we're trying, I know we're trying, but I don't think we're gonna. I understand, yeah.
And you, we've had this, we've had this discussion.
Yeah, I understand that.
But hopefully we can, yeah, look at the housing authority as we have more developments come to town, and look at that option. And before, actually, before we have other developments come to town, let's vet this process though. With the housing authority and the planning board and the town. To see how we're gonna accomplish.
I spent a lot of time working on this, it's too bad. I appreciate you, and, yeah.
Okay, we'll be back. Bill, with regard to the, then we need to talk about phasing and the spread, right? With the map? That, does that have to happen tonight?
Yes.
This, this spread, and I know you're saying, the middle units. That's the most affordable for affordable. Housing. So, we give another development down. Forty-six units, kind of all, and we do the same scenario, the middle unit is the most.
I thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize for yourself, what's the word you want?
I'm not gonna create a problem. You get it, because I called him to put a loop right on him, and I appreciate everything you've done.
But, sir.
Okay, we love the concept.
We just try to work with this.
We love the concept, we're just learning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And even the fee for the condos, the condo fee is less as well, and I'm, I'm not middle. Yes. So, the unit won't change, like, the way it is on the outside. Yeah, whatever that nobody is.
Luxury unit.
Yeah.
They're, they're different inside.
Yes.
You don't have the upgrades.
Yes.
At the other houses.
Correct.
What is in the affordable units versus what's? What is the distinction?
Typically, they'll pay, they'll have to pay extra, the affordable units will pay extra for hardwood floor and granite countertops. And they pay higher, uh, luxury items, finished basements, they'll pay, they'll pay a premium for that. About fifty percent of the people do come up with that money and do that.
Right, but so where, where's that list?
But that's, that, it, it has to be outside. The same, the inside.
I, I get that, but we, so our usual discussion on these things is, here's what the inside's gonna look like. This is what, this is what a market rate is, here's what the affordable is, here's the difference, so the board can assess. What we're doing.
So is it all carpet versus? Is there any hardwood in it at all?
No.
And what's the standard unit get for hardwood?
Hardwood first floor.
First floor.
Yeah.
So it'll be all carpet?
No, no base.
On a market rate one.
Yeah.
Um, so you, you normally hardwood, the first floor on a market rate.
Yeah.
And this one's gonna be all carpet. And then the granite countertops would be laminate countertops.
Yes.
Uh, versus granite.
This granite, yeah. Yeah.
No, no granite appliances.
Uh, and.
The wash, the dishwasher.
Yeah, everything is included.
Yes, not the refrigerator, but the refrigerator is not included, only other.
And we don't include washer dryer, anything.
Yeah, so what about, um, heating and AC, is, they still get AC?
Heating, yes, AC, no.
Okay.
Most of them.
I know.
Anyway.
They come up with the money.
Pine Hall is the same thing, yeah.
So this, this, um, respectfully, this is bending. Here we are, last minute, urgency to get this done, and all of this information we're asking is pulling out of you, and we don't have anything to evaluate this. But you want us to render a decision on something that we don't have enough information, or at least I feel like I don't have enough information on.
And you know that we have.
We've never done that before.
Yeah.
You're a builder, you build residential business.
But we never asked that before, sir.
Respectfully, we've been talking about this forever. Maybe not yet, yes, we have, we've talked. But it's just.
Question never came up.
I'd like a list of the difference between what the affordable units would have versus what a market.
Do that in five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, please do it.
We just said, we just said what it is, all the, we just said all of them.
This is basic stuff, and it's last minute, I feel like it's rushed, and we have to make a decision, and, and it, it's just not the way we operate.
Suggestion, um, with this. It seems like there's probably gonna be a little bit more robust discussion with this one, is there any way we can maybe come back to this and get? To the other public hearing where we actually have. Public input, there's still people waiting on the call and people.
Why, can you, can we take a?
Well, you don't have to make a decision on this either tonight, Brian, so we could, if the board wants to, it's getting late, we could continue, give you what you need, because. Jim was adamant that once you, once you submit the application, then we can have another continuance to render the decision. So you don't have to feel like you're under the gun tonight, the big thing that I was informed by Jim is they have to apply. By this time, because you have the closings, so whatever you need, I think we could, you can do that action, whatever you'd like, Brian. We could do that at a continued hearing, if that's, if that.
Never done that since I've been on the board.
What?
We've never released some, some of those. We never had an affordable plan that we haven't approved before, before releasing. That's something new that I, since I've been around at least.
You're not releasing the affordable.
Well, we have to have the affordable plan in place before we start. So housing through permits.
That's right, there doesn't have to be the decision tonight, I was, I was strictly told by Jim, as long as the permit is in place, like as far as the submittal. And that's what we have.
Sorry?
He does have that. He is, he is reserved to the fact that he's doing them onsite, has the onsite plan.
Right.
He's looking for his release.
It would be basically looking for ten percent, so there's two affordable houses. Be one of eleven.
It's what?
Round up, round up.
Okay, round up.
And how many are you looking for between in the next two weeks? So, if we were, if we were to continue this to next meeting. Cause we want to work with you, how many, how many would you need, how many houses would you need occupancy permits for in the next two weeks? Two weeks, give me a minimum number. So we can discuss it here.
We have, like I said, we have nine closing this, this year, and we have, out of the nine, we have seven.
In the next two weeks.
We have a seven, seven homes done, ready to close.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's at the end of the month.
Yeah.
And, and about.
Yes. It's, we only depending on a power right now, so we can get all our, um, final inspections.
So we're really talking about seven, you're looking, really looking at one, right? So you're looking for the plan to be approved, but it's. One to be in place, if you were looking for seven, ten percent properly, or just rounding.
This is what I would like to do. I think we have to agree tonight that we're going on site. With all of them. And then we figure a way to move forward, so we know. What is inside each unit? At below market value. Leave. The other units outside of it, just tell us what is in the inclusionary house.
We just gave you that list right there, it's written.
So, do you want to know the difference, or do you, or you want to know?
No, I, 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 my, my, I understand. Don't make, don't make an embrace. You're talking to Jim. And anyway, you, you, you had the same discussion. And I think the board's on the impression that tonight. This discussion was on all inclusionary housing would be onsite.
Yes.
So I think we've, we've agreed to that.
Yes.
The board has the right to consider the locations and the spread of these units. The material size and, uh, pictures are similar to that of market rate. But, the inclusionary housing has less options. So, I, I think tonight we agree, we move forward with everything onsite. I don't want to hold up your sails. To increase the comfort level of the board. What would, what would increase your comfort level?
I, I, I don't have any discomfort, I think there's plenty of, um. There's a lot more to be developed and a lot more. So, I would really like to understand better the spread and the, the, the inside of these units before we. Uh, uh, we bless this.
Would you feel comfortable postponing this? In the next week?
Yeah, but I, I would like.
Would you be comfortable releasing the lots and continuing this discussion to another evening? Could, could we come to that agreement?
Yeah.
Is that fair, Brian and Phil?
We're talking, you're looking for a release on seven between now and next meeting.
Is that fair?
That's what you're looking.
Okay.
I, I guess, we've, we've never done that.
Like I said, we've never done this before. Months ahead of time, and we're working with you, okay?
We've, we've never done this.
So thank you.
But I, but when we do get to it, we're gonna be looking for by law, I'm gonna suggest you read the Bellingham by law. Word for word, because we're gonna, we're gonna scrutinize it, like kind and methods, those words are gonna mean a lot to us. Um, I would be okay, one person's opinion is releasing the seven.
Yeah, okay.
Have them come back next time, if they're agreeing to this, one person's opinion. Having Tim release the seven. Come back next time with a full plan to be approved. If it's not approved next plan, no more releases.
What, what full plan you mean?
Be identified, identify which ones are good. Well, I'm gonna say the middle, having the middle ones on each one of them is not something I'm gonna wanna go though, because when you walk into an area, we're not supposed to know which ones are inclusionary, which ones aren't.
But you're not gonna know that.
They're all in the middle.
We just even, we just finished a couple of years ago, we finished one in your town, and we did the same.
Let me, let me give you an example, Harmony, Harmony has broken out all over. The name, all of the neighborhood.
We are doing that in there.
Some of the smaller lots, some of the bigger lots, some, they're all over the place, and you can't, you can't tell which ones by driving through.
How are you gonna know that driving through that project, that the middle unit's gonna be affordable?
It is, it is the thing. You're not gonna know.
You will not know that. You will not know that.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do.
I'm, I'm ready, I would like to vote for, and I'd make the, make a motion if it's appropriate, that we authorized Tim. And you guys can vote this down if you like. authorized Tim to release seven. We put them on the next agenda item. We go through the full plan. If the full plan's not approved, then we would not be releasing anything else.
Okay.
But we'll have that discussion and we'll work with you for what you need, seven between now. Are you guys available in the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty six.
Is there, I mean, is there any public notices?
We, we got a.
No, we're good, we're good.
Okay, I just made a proposal with.
Yeah.
Like the.
I would like to.
Or would you amend it?
I would like one amended.
Okay.
Okay. Because I think we, we gained some headway today. I would like to instill instead, um, that this request be for all onsite units.
Yes.
Yep.
Of inclusionary housing.
Yes.
Moving forward. Condition on that, we will release seven additional units until the next meeting. Where we can discuss the what, kind, quality, and spread of those all onsite inclusionary units. Is that?
Ryan, uh, maybe just add, just have them, uh, have a typed up narrative, what you submitted and attach.
Great advice.
Whatever, yeah, it's okay, you know, just as much detail as you can.
Yeah.
Place points on what you gave us, yeah.
Yeah.
Paper, you know, that way it doesn't hold up for the next meeting.
That's right.
Exactly what they're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something lost here, we can, you know.
I think, uh, uh, we submit to the state, I believe, what we do. Something like that, we can move in with that. We provide to the state. Yeah.
Okay.
I, yeah, I don't know if the state requires you to, um, um, provide what's inside. One of the board members would like to know.
To know what you inside.
That narrative that you gave, which you can type into the touch.
Yeah.
For, you know, that way, you know, you.
We bring it back to a second, so we have a second of the motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
And we need a second.
Second behind you. Any further discussion?
So we're gonna continue it until October twenty sixth.
What? All for the vote in the motion.
Then I'm sorry.
Right next.
Go on.
Go on.
Okay.
Okay, here you go. Your A and R, do you wanna have them act on it after this? How does the board wanna proceed with that? We do have an A and R application.
It's really straightforward.
Really, okay.
It's got a hundred fifty four, four hundred and forty thousand.
That's also in your pocket.
Can I be done in the next meeting?
It's, yeah, we have only twenty days, and then it can effectively approve. No, you have to act on that tonight.
So it's, uh. It's, it's a home, it was existing farm home. That we, um, we sold to one of our workers, so it's an art force housing, which is, we're really happy to have one of our workers over there onsite. And the old farmhouse, that's right.
The day I wanna do it at the end, when I think the next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay. Besides that, you're good for your options.
The, the bond.
Yeah, we have the bond.
So who had that?
You have the.
We had that, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't hear from them sound.
We can provide a bond.
I don't think.
Okay. All right, we'll be in touch, thank you. Sorry about that, it's a late night.
No, no. It's what it is.
Can you hold on a second?
Hold on, applicants, can you, guys, gentlemen, you hold on, you hold on one minute, we got a clarification here.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, because there's a question on procedure.
Yeah, I just, so I wanted to give you guys a fair shake. We, we haven't acted upon your request for the A and R. And, and if you're gonna leave, then we'll be discussing that and voting on it without, if you're fine with that.
No, no, what's that?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that, thank you.
Okay, come on up. Thank you.
Where do you give the leaves? Nothing useful when you need to.
Sure.
Is it right here?
That's fine. That works, the old fashioned rework.
Who's you gonna get into the rest of the month?
I know, you're good, we're good, keep moving, we're moving, sorry about that.
Excellent, right, right. Got a lot going on.
Yes.
Thanks for sticking it out with us.
Thanks.
My kids already went to bed, so what?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we, we're here on three oh six Maple Street Development Plan. Uh, we, as you know, we've had very robust meeting. Uh, this is the first meeting we've had. Um, can you please read the public?
Three oh six Maple Street, that'll come, three oh six Maple Street LLC, owner Andrew. Charger?
Satchel.
Satchel, apologies, apology. Um, the project will consist of a single story warehouse. Building containing fifty nine, comma, four, zero, fifty nine? Four hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, type one, thank you, it looks okay. Square feet, which includes approximately forty nine fifty square feet of accessory building space. At three oh six Maple Street in Bellingham, approximately eleven point five acres of land. Shown on access map thirty seven, parcel six B, zoned industrial. The plans were prepared by Allen Engineering Associates, one forty Hartford Avenue, Oakdale, Mass. Only one, seven, four, seven.
I'd like to make a motion, open the hearing.
So.
Okay.
All in favor?
Ben inside, Brian.
Go on.
Go on.
Yeah, go on.
Morning Kim, so I love you.
Absolutely, and I'll be as quick as possible.
That'd be great.
All, uh, my name is Michael Dryden, I'm a senior project manager with Allen Engineering. Uh, joining me is Andrew Satcher, owner applicant for the project under the entity three oh six Maple LLC. Is everybody generally familiar with the, the area, the project site? I'll just walk you through it very quickly. I know it's very late, outlined in yellow, it's a site, it's eleven and a half acres, it's located entirely within the industrial district. Uh, but it uses, you see the town line, uh, to the east, the Franklin Town Line, vacant land to the east. Uh, to the north is a mixed commercial building, I believe there's a gym in that building. To the west across Maple Street, of course, the access driveway to Campanelli, uh, Business Park. And to the south, residential dwellings, um, off of Maple Street and Stonehenge Road. Uh, there are some wetland resources on the site, I will show you those very quickly. Outlined in blue, in the northeast corner is a perennial stream. Uh, there's a two hundred foot riverfront area associated with that right here. Outline in green is the ordering vegetative wetlands, all of these resource areas have been approved by the Conservation Commission through the ANRAD process that occurred in April of this year. So these are the resource areas, and that's a great tool that we use to work around, um, uh, so that we can avoid wetland resource areas in this case. We also have a single family dwelling, a garage, there's a few small structures, a deck, a driveway, you see that, that's the only part of the site that's developed today. Obviously, that's going to be raised to make way for the project. Otherwise, it's undeveloped woodland. So moving right along, I'll go to the layout plan. As was read into the record, a single story warehouse building, fifty nine thousand four hundred square feet. As currently envisioned, it would be, uh, three different tenants, there are no tenants identified at this time for the project, so. This is sort of your, your best guess is what this, how this may be configured. Uh, makes perfect sense in terms of the size and configuration of the spaces. Uh, so again, no tenants have been identified. Uh, so access to the property will be via a single curb cut, it's directly across from the Campanelli Business Park driveway. Of course, that just makes good planning sense. And while we're on the subject of access, the geometry, uh, was configured in accordance with the traffic study that was, uh, provided, uh, prepared by Chapel Engineering, I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about prohibiting right-hand turns out of here for truck traffic. Much like was, um, imposed upon the project across the street, so the geometry is set up to, um, to hinder that movement or prevent that movement, there's a raised island here today with signs on it. We've only, we only have a very tight radius here, so there's really no way a truck can make that movement, I just wanna make that clear right out of the gate, that truck will be leaving the site to.
And going left.
The south. Sorry?
Going left.
Going left.
Yeah.
To the south, absolutely. Uh, so access and circulation, so there's, there's signage, signage provided on the plan that force truck traffic to use this movement to the back, you'll see that I'm loading, uh, about the twelve of them total, or in the back of the building. This driveway that you see here is for emergency access only, and it's signed as such. So no trucks will be using that, no vehicles will be using that, it's strictly for emergency purposes. There are a hundred and nineteen parking spaces proposed in total, that's, um, I believe, yeah, calculated based on two per thousand. Um, I mentioned twelve loading docks, there's also an outdoor storage component that's outlined here. That's just under seventeen thousand square feet, that's a paid storage area. Um, just to jump back to traffic quickly, in, included with the submission was the traffic impact and access study by Chapel Engineering. And I don't wanna spend a lot of time on it unless you want me to, but, uh, it's very straightforward. The roadway network providing access to the site, uh, is more than adequate for the, uh, trip generation, the trip generation itself is very minimal. Um, no, no offsite improvements or mitigation is required, site distance is addressed in this report as well. There's some minor, uh, tree trimming and pruning that would be needed, but there's no mature trees that need to come down. Um, so, um, pretty straightforward from a traffic standpoint. This is a scenic road, and. Um, I may have misunderstood the process early on, but I think it requires a separate, separate application. I think that was my misunderstanding, I thought that we'd sort of checked the boxes here, but we will certainly follow up with that. Um, but just to touch on that quickly, there's essentially three components to that permit, as I understand it, tree removal. We have no trees in the right of way that are being removed, there's a grass strip, a sidewalk, and then another grass strip. Uh, so no trees, there is a stone wall in this location along the property line. I, I, I almost don't wanna call it a wall, it's a, it's a row of stones on the ground, it's, it has literally no height to it, it's in, in other areas along the site front, there's, there's a more formal wall. We'll quantify that, and certainly, if it be the pleasure of the board, we'll utilize that stone and create radii with the stone, uh, which is, you know, pretty standard. Um, as I understand it, the third component is noise, um, so we expect noise levels at Maple Street to not even come close to the, uh, thresholds that are in the bylaw. Uh, we purposely set loading up behind the building. Um, that's really the only thing that's gonna generate any, any, uh, noise on this site, would be trucks backing up, that's why it's behind the building. So the building itself will act as noise attenuation, um, so we expect the decibel requirements to be easily maintained along Maple Street.
I was just looking at landscaping, so.
Want me to jump to that now?
No.
Which right here, so why don't I just do that, um, so in, in terms of landscaping, I'll just walk you through it very quickly. Again, we do have an outdoor storage area here, so we have a solid barrier fence that starts here and wraps around the corner. With that, the six foot high stockade fence, uh, to screen that area. The other fencing that you see, it transitions into, um, four foot high chain link fence for the detention area. We also have a stockade fence proposed along the southern border, this is where the residential dwellings are. Uh, in addition to that, we have landscaped areas, um, we do meet the, um, required open space interior parking area. Uh, requirement, I believe it's five percent, so we've addressed that as well. The lighting, while I have this page, um, you'll see the, the foot candle illumination levels here, these are the wall packs that we're proposing. They would be on the north side of the building, and on the east side of the building, there's no lighting purposely proposed on the south side of the building, just our sensitivities for the residential, uh, properties to the south. We do have light poles, they're twenty foot tall, one here, 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 this one at the entryway, and then there's a couple at the end of this parking aisle, and then three more at the extreme north. All lightings, um, faced, directed away from this property line, which again, where the two residential properties are. Please stop me any time if you want me to slow down, or if you have questions, just trying to keep it moving.
We appreciate. That's all right.
So quickly on utilities, um, you see here, gas, water, and power are all derived directly from Maple Street. We do not have sewer in this location, as you know, so we're proposing onsite sewage disposal. We've already done for collation testing to, uh, make sure that that is viable. That is accurately sized, we do have to file with the Board of Health, but that system that you see there from a site planning standpoint is accurately sized to make sure that the site can accommodate it in that location. Stormwater management, just one last flip here, um. Of course, part of this is stormwater management by law, that's a two-pronged, um, application. Development plan and stormwater permit, so the plan that you see before you, I won't get into the weeds on it, I realize it's gonna be peer reviewed, but it fully complies with MasD E P stormwater management standards, as well as the local bylaw, um, and the local permit requirements. And we are mitigating stormwater with essentially two main components, you see a large subsurface, uh, infiltration detention system in the back of the building, and then in addition to that, a large open basin. We've provided erosion control, a plan, construction sequencing, staging areas, things of that nature in the plan set as well. So I realize I went very quickly, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a couple comments, I'm gonna begin one. Uh, it's a rather robust project, gosh, right now, but I, I think that's great. I think at some point we need to look at peer review, for stormwater traffic, and maybe noise, based on the fact you need to apply.
Right.
For the, uh, scenic road permit. Uh, just to confirm, um. You need to try to take advantage of the stones that are there, or repurpose them as best you can.
Absolutely.
If you leave it there the way it is and there's no disturbance, I believe that may suffice with the um the permit. Wetland Protection Act. Has that been addressed?
Yes, as as I mentioned earlier, we, we, and I apologize if I apologize if I didn't make it clear. But we did get the resource areas confirmed through the Conservation Commission. This, yeah, yeah, we have an O R A D, and this is the one hundred-foot buffer zone. We've kept all the work outside of the one hundred-foot buffer zone. So we do not anticipate a filing with the Conservation Commission.
Has the town witnessed any soil testing yet?
Yes.
And how does that come back?
We, we, as I pointed out earlier, in the area of the subsurface sewage disposal, we did witness testing and we have uh acceptable park rates.
Okay.
Uh a very early component that we, that we, that we actually did unwitness testing to make sure that this was a viable site.
Okay.
And then did witness testing.
Okay.
Has the conservation determined that that's accurate?
Yeah, they issued an O R A D. To confirm the resource areas.
Great, okay.
Again, we can talk about stormwater here management. Um are you truck turning radius?
So I did put a template on the site. We, we wouldn't expect uh a, a, a large vehicle to try to use this twenty-foot access. They could if they want, but the the primary access around the building, of course, would be that, that truck. And then there's a twenty-four-foot aisle, and then it transitions into that, again, that twenty-foot wide access. So there's full access around the building. Um we can certainly defer up to the chief um as we would normally do. And work through those issues.
I'll go it over. Rob, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll be very quick. Um I know there's still, there's advisors here and I want to hear what public has to say. But um from a stormwater perspective, I know you don't have any tenants yet. Might have prospective ones, but assuming that um, well, not knowing who the tenants are. It's a pretty safe assumption that there could be fleet storage on the site. I think you may, looking at your stormwater, that you might already meet the LUPL standard.
Yeah.
But if not, or if you haven't documented it, just please document it. Um so that's one of the items. Additionally, that outdoor storage area located in that, the northern section, I'd love to hear. A little bit more about what you're anticipating there and definitely to make sure that LUPL standards are met. There. One component that I know is it's discussed very frequently with Conservation Commission. If you're not filing with them, I know I'd love, you know, I want to bring it up with us, is snow storage. I'm not sure if the areas are shown, but um okay. So there's that. Um and then lastly, I would just agree to it. Peer review for zoning, stormwater, traffic, and then I know noise might be a good item too, but those four. I would recommend we get that rolling anytime now.
And again, we need a clarification of our storage. Because we reached a maximum point for bulk storage.
Well, bulk storage, you know, that's.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, no, I agree. I thought I would definitely say we need to discuss.
Yeah.
Cause I, I envision if you do outdoor storage. There's probably going to be some conditions put forward.
One thousand seven, to, you know, and give me a little context. This is the first time we're in front of you folks. This is. I've been, we, I own the land with my two partners. Got up, but ten months now. And there's been a lot, there's been a seven, eight, nine, ten different machinations of this land. If we did all the South Bay stuff and did all the wetland stuff and got the O R A D and all that. And we, you know, met with the, you know, some partner in the butters and have had ongoing sensitivity conversations with them. Even though, you know, this is site plan approval, like no special permit. And like just to start, like, you know, the building was bigger. We had loading on the, you know, on, on, on this side, right on the south side next to the butters. It's changed a bunch of times to try to really preserve some sensitivity. And you know, that's just an emergency access. It's labeled there. So hopefully it's never used, right? Hopefully it's big enough, you know, or if you need an extra foot or two, we'll make it, you know, so a fire truck or an ambulance can go around. The hundred percent understanding of the bulk storage permit and where it is with the town. I, we purposely labeled it tenant, you know, self-storage. So if you want to impose a condition that it's not a third-party roof, is renting pavement from me, right? Happy to do that. In in my experience, it almost, we build very rarely. My partner and I mostly buy older buildings. We position them all up and down four ninety-five and stuff. Every building built. Not within the last ten years is always short on pavement, the way most tenants operate today, right? And making some sacrifices because nine out of ten tenants would take to have three hundred and sixty-five degree access around the building. But to have some extra pavement if we fit within the impervious ratios and not have all that excess parking. Which typically turns into outdoor storage anyway. We just thought that that was the, the appropriate spot on the site to sort of designate because it's my butter on that side.
Yeah.
Another industrial building.
Yeah, we can discuss it more. I'm more thinking that, you know, we don't really want any hazardous waste or anything out there, anything.
My lender would allow me that anyway, so.
Talk about conditions.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Future time.
Not at eleven twenty. Yeah, totally fine.
Yeah, I just have one question. Is marketing this as three separate suites or it one big building?
I haven't put this on, I haven't put this on the market yet. We want to get a little further along with you guys. The world's kind of upside down anyway, right now, to be honest with you, so, you know, it may take us a while. We're not going to go build a speculative building here. But you know, in, in this general market, um we see the ten, the twenty, the thirty thousand square foot tenants, you know. A lot of them. It gives me much.
The saleability, okay?
Yeah, the leaseability. Our plan is to build and lease.
Okay.
But I gotta have, yes, good question.
My, my only, I know, I know this is just an introduction, but our general comments are is that this is a very. Sensitive area, as you know, because of the, the budding of the industrial land and with residential. So we're always very mindful of that, something that we'll look at closely. Um I am also something that I think we'll talk about is hours of operation. With regards, I know that you want twenty-four hours. Um but again, with the, the sensitivity to the neighbors with the. That is something I think that we have to really think about what we're doing and about selection of tenants and what, you know, we oftentimes. Discuss and condition um no outdoor activities of a certain type or of a, during certain times and things like that. So whatever you can do to uh mitigate the impacts to the neighbors. Is the best approach in my opinion.
I, I would tell you, and I'm sure some, some of the neighbors will speak up and whether they speak highly of it or supportive it or against it. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, but to try to do the right thing, we have met with the. Other at the butters. You know, at the request, it can just, out of natural human character and being in the business, not out of, you know, like a required, you know, meeting. By zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
You know, when there's a give and take and we want to give as much as we can without jeopardizing the interior of, you know, our business of, of.
I appreciate those efforts, just looking at it first blush without knowing anything else. I noticed that the building is closest to the residential butters versus more not closer to the. Industry and commercial industrial users. That would be something, that would be something.
And I, my first two plans from him and my design bill contractor, I had the building the other way. But then my, but your best friend is a, whether it's a fence or a residential neighbor or an industrial neighbor. Is the end of the building where there's no loading, right, this way. And there's no throughway traffic. We, we turned, flipped the building and I moved it this way. So the, this side of the building is just a building wall and an emergency access.
Right, so your activity.
Of a fire department or a police department, so. In, in my opinion, this was the most sensitive and the biggest give on my end. Because I had, at a certain point, I had a bit, much bigger building on, on this site. But to deal with the curb cut, and our traffic engineer from Chapel had done all the other traffic studies at the N A S. For the projects across the street and then, you know, Marcus's new project of Mechanic Street. So everybody understood the curb cut and where it wanted to go. And you need a little circulation going in. We push the building that way to help the neighbors.
They also actually look at it too. I mean, that's the other.
Nothing going on.
Yeah, I mean, what's the lesser of two evils? And I think from a planning perspective. We, we sort of think that the, the, the building with no lighting on it, no activity, no vehicular traffic is more sensitive to the neighbors.
And I'll say this is a flag for discussion.
Sure.
And then I, at least for a conservative. So as we progress, you're going to want to see us, you know, what you're going to be screening. Uh if you're driving down Maple Street, where are you going to see? I am concerned about. Outdoor storage, um driving down Maple Street and seeing pallets out there would not be something I'd be interested in seeing.
We agree.
There's going to be a lot of discussion on that, um.
That, the fencing is shell, right?
Right, we definitely, we'd be definitely.
Big discussion on that one.
I pointed it out, the fencing actually wraps around you for that exact purpose.
And then we're going to talk about the screening to the south of, assuming it's the south, yeah, the south of the building. What the neighbors are going to see, we'll go through that.
Absolutely.
You definitely want to see that, so. I do like how you designed it so you could only go to the south, so that's, because they're already thinking ahead of us, so it's good. And I think I'll leave that there.
Just real quick, um in the future, we should definitely have a conversation about. The north side and the, the employee parking and all the employees kind of walking through potential truck traffic. There's fifty spaces and I think that potential tractor trailers will be driving along that. We should start by saying.
Okay.
Many employees crossing.
Um I, I thought the comments have been made by other board members. One thing we haven't discussed so far is the hundred and nineteen parking spots. I think it may be advantageous. We don't do this often. Um you may want to look at a uh special permit to reduce the parking.
I think your eyes need to be directed to him.
And reduce the impervious surface.
Reduce the impervious surface.
Less parking, less impervious. Traditionally, I, I've been talking to Jim, I don't, I don't think warehouses need the amount of parking spots.
If I, if I were betting man, I would bet fifty percent that would have mattered that this, but if. That this is not strictly warehouse. This could be light assembly, R D, light manufacturing.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, I don't.
Then that's why I thought this was where.
It could be warehouse. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have a tenant. Sometimes we do, but I could have one warehouse tenant and. One light assembly tenant and one just.
Okay, then tell your.
Narrow that down a little bit, help us.
Narrow down the parking space.
Narrow down the concept of the building, what you're going to do with it. Multiple use, I mean, you're going to throw nineteen different things. We're going to be debating nineteen different things. The more you can narrow it down.
So I, I'm going to open book. This is. I don't have a, we bought this land.
Yeah.
Okay. The due diligence that we did on the land was making sure we had clear title, a zoning opinion as to what was allowed use by rights. And we dug holes in the ground and did unwitness purchase because we had to close. It was a quick look. Did we understand the market, right? The market has gotten significantly worse since we bought the property, but we're long on land, okay? So I haven't even brought this to the market yet because I want to know that I have permits. Ninety-nine out of a hundred developers would have been like, mark, they would have big giant balloons hanging and pylon signs saying space the lease. We've been approached by a number of different buyers to buy it from us. We just right place, right time, and the guy wanted to sell and that was it. We've said no. We don't have a tenant or tenants in our back pocket and we're not talking to any brokers or anybody. So I just can't promise you, other than it would be an allowed use within the industrial zone in Bellingham. Who my tenant or tenants are going.
You're going to build a building, sell it to someone else and leave the concept up to them.
I'm not.
Are you keeping the building?
No, you said.
I can't promise that I'm going to keep the building.
Are you devising it from the beginning?
No, no. My goal is, is to get a permit. Market the building, and if I get lucky enough to find a tenant for maybe forty thousand of the sixty thousand square feet or fifty-nine thousand four hundred. And they sign a ten-year lease and they actually have credit, right? That's our business. Then I would go to my lender, put up a little bit more money, borrow some money. And build a traditional, really nice building in the town of Bellingham here with that tenant while I tried to market the rest of the space. And, you know, we would do our devising with a whole new set of CDs saying it's forty and twenty or. It's, we're just not going to build a.
Just hard for us, the board, we're going to talk with the public.
Yeah.
They're going to want input from us. We really don't know because we have no idea what really going on. We've got a big building.
They're limited to the.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it's multiple.
So the same sort of.
Yeah, but if they're allowed.
Yeah.
Most of the buildings in town are built, are built on speculation.
Right.
Um and uh we don't issue occupancy permits on a building with no build-up. We issue a certificate of completion. Then depending on what they end up getting for a tenant, between the fire uh deputy and myself. They vet out, we vet out the use. So there's a lot of different things that have to happen depending on the use. I mean, as far as the bulk storage goes, there, we have a list of items that classify as bulk storage that won't be allowed without a special permit. You know, but I guess that would be at the end, just like a lot of these other buildings. So, you know, I, I get what he's saying, but there is another process. It's not just an occupancy permit at the end on a speculatory building like this. It gets vetted out, but there's a bunch of different use groups that are high hazard, lower hazard. And the interior fit-out depends on that use. So we would also depend it on the ex, you know, any kind of proposed use outside that he would have to come back for as well.
That's right. I was just wondering if the permitting aspect on your red.
Yeah, no, you get, they don't get occupancy on a speculatory building because they don't have a tenant. But, you know, like some of the buildings, they require additional, um, you know, um. Alarm systems and A D As and, uh, you know, a design, you know, depending on, it could be a tire warehouse. And a tire warehouse is the highest hazard, so it's done to a different, you know. Right, so I mean. I get what you're saying, so, uh, you know, as, as you get further on, so you know, it's not an occupancy permit until you have a tenant. And then I can, I'm sure you're aware of this, okay?
If I dentist, if I had a tenant, I'd be happy. You know, the world is the world, but we have to get a permit. And most tenants that are out there looking for ten to twenty thousand square feet won't even talk to a developer. Unless a developer has permits in place, so they know it's a real proposition built.
So, so was there a lighting plan here?
Yes, there is, there is.
Do you have, can you put that up?
While you're doing that, can I open for the public?
Yeah, the referring radiuses, did you use the template?
I did, I did.
I can give you. Those, those corners with the twenty foot.
So what I did was I used this movement. I didn't think that your fully-sized apparatus would want to make that move maneuver.
We, we'd like to be able to go around it just in case. That's, we don't like to do it. But if it's necessary, we want to be able to.
Okay, so I'll have to modify our curving a little bit to make that work. It's, we're not miles off.
Right, that's, I just wanted to make sure it looks a little tight.
Do you want them each other in that?
Absolutely.
I don't think it's a huge problem. I know we have Peter Gabriel up here for question. Anyone in the audience, and I apologize, you've been here for a long evening. Yes, sir.
Uh Steve Kohler, and uh beside me, I'm, I'm, the Sterns are to my right. They're the, one of the butters to the south. And I'm just to the right of them to the south. And for reference. Um their house is two hundred and thirty feet from the corner of the building. The airhouse and mine is three hundred and forty. Uh before I begin, apologies to Andrew. He, he did reach out. He met with us. Um very pleasant. I'll credit him with being a good salesman. And uh he's doing his best, but we had a good conversation. Um we're in conflicting positions, but uh that's the nature of the beast. We address some of our concerns for myself. Uh the big one um is noise. Uh I live from our house, the highway's eighteen hundred feet. We can hear the private cars every time they go off the edge of the road to the rumble strip. You can hear it in the house. The relic is four thousand feet, and this time of year with the window open, I can hear the backup alarms all night. And uh Camp Bow Wow is nine hundred and seventy feet. And they changed the doorbell uh this summer. I had to go over and ask them to turn it down. They, they had a, an alarm that sounded like Mario Kart. It was going all weekend long. And, and sadly French, they, they're very cooperative. Again, our houses in reference to, in comparison to eighteen hundred feet, four thousand and another thousand. Are only two hundred and three forty. Uh so for me, the noise would be uh trucks idling. It would be hours of operation. Trucks idling at night, especially if, if you get a driver much like uh Blue Lynx. They show up early in the weekend and it's winter and they're just sleeping in the truck and the truck's idling all night. Can I speak for you guys?
Sure.
Uh I know Sue is. Uh, I know Sue is, is very concerned about the site, um, because she's the closest. Um, Bob is concerned obviously with the value of this house as, as we all are, but their well, I could approach this. With Sterns, I was scared. Their well is right there. And the stormwater management, all this impervious service, it channels all the recharged water for the, for the area over to here. So there's a little bit of a concern there.
The snow storage, the snow storage.
The, the snow storage is, is right here. Again, the well is there, and my well is right here.
Could you point that again, get on your, well.
My well is right there, the Sterns is here, they're both in the back of the house. That's it, um, I thought the parking was a little high, but, uh, and I, I I think the site lighting is fair, I'd be concerned about glare and I do see, um, lights through the woods from here in the winter. Um, again, I want to thank Andrew, he, he did reach out, we had a good meeting with him. Um, he's trying to do what he can for his property and, and as we are for us. Bob and Sue.
Yeah, the building's gonna be forty-five feet tall, and that's not cotton, they have to fill that land to get the things to its level. It'll be pretty tall, look at a pimple, back of your house. Houses right in that area just feel hungry, they're worth a lot of money. You think it's devalued like crazy, you're not gonna get half what you get right now, if a couple years from now they build it up.
Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I thank you all board members, I know it's twenty minutes to twelve, thank you very much for your time. Um, I have actually taken the time to read the traffic study, and I've, and I know it's not time for traffic, but I just want to put it in front of the board, that they have presented that they might have twelve loading days, but yet ninety percent of the traffic is gonna be car traffic. It's zero impact on any traffic on Maple Street. And I'm just finding that extremely hard to believe, that with no prospective tenants, they could tell us that they're gonna have zero impact further on Maple Street. And again, I'm, I'm sorry to keep you guys so late in the evening and.
Oh, no, don't.
I hope we close this down soon.
Please, that's over here.
Yeah, thank you.
Shannon.
Hi, thank you, um, I had a couple of concerns with this plan, the first being that based off of the plans that are posted online, it looks like there's very little, um, very little vegetation that will be separating the warehouse building from the residential neighbor. And so I wanted to address that, it'd be probably preferable for the, the residential neighbor that there's quite a bit more of, um, that, that vegetation coverage between the two, but with a forty-five foot tall building, there's only so much you can do and I recognize that. Um, another thing is that there was a comment about the loading bays being put behind the building um, in, in relation to where Maple Street is to help minimize the noise on Maple Street. But I'd like to, um, I'd like to remind everybody that there's additional people who live behind there on Stonehead Road. And so all of that noise that was brought up before is going to definitely impact all the residents that are not on Maple Street but behind Maple Street.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Um, and then the final thing is I agree with the traffic study comment, uh, there is quite a bit of impact on traffic just from the Amazon warehouse. And when a, a big eighteen wheeler is sitting on the left turn only lane to get onto one forty from Maple Street, they tend to take up the entire turning light, which impacts all the cars waiting behind them, so any additional eighteen wheelers that go on that road are definitely going to impact traffic. I hope not to the point where we see backups all the way to where Victory is like we used to, but you never know. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll get those comments addressed. Yes, sir.
Uh, Jeff Prescott, I'm at three fourteen Maple Street, and again, kudos to Andrew, he hasn't reached out to me, but he has reached out to the neighbors, and, uh, I just, and I think the board's picked up on most of the things that we typically are concerned with. Um, one thing would be backup alarms, making it the whoosh.
That was.
Backup alarms.
That was my, that would be.
In the victory, um, let's see, we talked about hours of operation, entrance and exit. I think what I saw in the plans looked pretty good as far as preventing trucks going right, but I have not seen a project yet in Bellingham that with signage or whatever, the trucks don't go left, Amazon goes left all the time. They've had to rebuild the sidewalk, they moved the fire hydrant because of it, um, and they go right over the, even if they put the island in, they still go over the left. Amazon has a big sign saying no left-hand turns out of their lot, and sometimes it's their trucks that are doing it too. Um, have seen less trucks coming out of High Street lately, which is a good thing. Um, but again, that would be making sure that nobody can, you know, maybe cars, but uh, but with the island and the way you've got your, your stuff situated, I would tend to think that would be kind of tough for them.
I think it would be impossible.
But, you know, they do it.
Yeah.
I know truck drivers.
The only difference is.
Sir, I interrupt you for one moment.
Yeah.
You mentioned that I caught my ear. You see people coming down High Street, trucks taking a left?
Oh, trucks on High Street, we've been to many meetings talking about we, we've got it signs with victory.
Call, call either Victory or.
Always do. Yeah, I, I mean, I used to make calls to the police department, but like I said.
You call the police department?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, haven't seen it, it hasn't been an issue as of late, and I'm home during the day, so I used to see it quite a bit.
Okay.
Uh, but that's, again, new tenants, new guys that are using Waze instead of GPS and stuff.
I understand.
It'll take you up High Street.
I understand.
From one night five. Instead of down Maple Street or whatever, it's just, you know.
One thing I learned is on the one, uh, speak your will, it's the grease and the gravy. So, you know, you keep complaining.
Yeah.
If, if you don't get any relief, mention it twice if you can isolate, we get license plates and we'll try.
Okay, I mean, you can, you can ask Jim, you, I mean, Jim's got videos, so.
Okay. Good.
We, we've sent over the years, um, he mentioned the stone wall, the stone wall was added to Maple Street when they redid Maple Street years ago, so it is crumbling, it's fallen down, but anything to preserve that and it's required by the, uh, scenic road by law anyway. Um, the only que, the only other things I would mention is I've been on this, I've been here thirty-eight years. No projects have ever been able to be built there because they either didn't perk or wetlands, um, we had the, the previous, the last project that wanted to go in there was, was a, a local landscaping company, and after peer review, um, they made it so that the, the kid couldn't put his business in there because of wetlands and stuff, so those things over the years, now all of a sudden it's perfect and okay, I would just ask, you know, I would just bring that up.
Wouldn't we plan to?
You know, I, but I know it'll be addressed, but other than, like, like I said, um, I think everything else has been covered, so.
Just, I mean, just to clear that to the last point, we do have witness park testing, I don't know what the date was, how long ago that landscaping company tried uh, to build here, but we now have, um, much greater park rates, even though I don't even think we exceed that initial thirty threshold that it used to be. We're under that, so we do have wetlands in the back, they've been delineated and confirmed, so we do have a developable site. Uh, we do have some groundwater to deal with, um, and we've made sure that our subsurface uh, infiltration and drainage is two feet above groundwater, so it's, it's, um, not perfectly flat site, we have a retaining wall in one area, but it's certainly developable. I just wanted to kind of get.
I think what's happened is, um, all the time we're talking the same things. I think this firm's probably invested a lot of time, energy and mind in trying to work with this site as best they can. Uh, any other comments? So, um, I think we'd like to start, is it too early to start peer review process?
It's up to the applicant, if they want to address the comments before it goes, because obviously it's your dime, so if you want to come back another time with whatever revisions and then get one more opinion and then send it to peer review, or we send it to peer review and go back and forth, it's it's, it's up to you.
I, I certainly appreciate that.
We haven't sent it to peer review because there were some revisions. It's up to you, it's really your dime at the end of the day, if you.
I'm just sort of thinking that through, you know, we did get some valuable input from the board, but what I think I heard was we're going to be talking about this, we're going to be talking about this, I think I don't think, hopefully, fingers crossed, that we're talking about wholesale changes to this plan, so I think it would be beneficial to get the technical aspects, to get that peer review in motion, we're certainly we understand we have to continue to work with the board to address your comments. Um, but I, I think it would be beneficial to get that in motion, and if you disagree, certainly speak up.
No, I don't, the, in a, the lead time with, whether it's P S E, whoever the peer review is, is four, six, seven weeks.
Because we don't know, right, right.
If we're running a parallel path and we come back, we probably catch them, so I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a I, I hope there's not a big risk there, I know it's on my dime, but we'd like to continue to to move along, so I, I think that's okay.
So are we thinking, we have what, review noted traffic?
Yeah, I would do zoning, uh, stormwater.
Yep.
Uh, traffic and noise, yeah.
Noise, noise.
Good. Those would be the four.
All the time. We're, we're gonna want a powder metro plan.
So there's no spillage, but that would.
You already have a light.
There you have it.
We do have a lighting plan that shows the illumination.
Right.
Okay.
And that'll be.
That'll be reviewed.
Right.
I will, I will want to.
If I could just ask one question regarding the noise, so that's part of the scenic road, can we, can we actually get that in motion with the peer reviewer? Independent of an actual application for the scenic road permit? Because we can certainly prepare that application very quickly, but, um, you know, it's gonna take some time to get into the queue here, so.
It might actually, well, I don't, I don't know the approval criteria off the top of my head for site plan review, but it might be able to kind of finesse that into the parallel track, so I would have no issue. It's formal, it's such that, right? Yeah, I, if the, if you're okay with it, I say let's.
Let's go ahead.
Get it going.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Um, as you've seen tonight, we were very robust agenda moving forward. We're looking at, uh, doing a lot of peer review. I'm thinking honestly, the earliest we can do this, we only have one meeting in July.
You mean.
I was up the door.
We have one meeting this summer.
A sales size bonus.
I'd like to, uh, push this off the first meeting in January. So, you know, we get everything back and forth, the scope, the peer reviews.
Okay.
That is, that is unfortunate, um, if, if that's the best we can do, um, we understand that you have a lot on your plate.
Yeah, I mean, December fourteenth, pretty far.
What if we limited ourselves to twenty minutes to, to try to clean up, I'm gonna have an ongoing dialogue with a few of the butters, you know, the, the.
So I don't want everything back.
Of the period.
Correct, we have to do a scope, correct?
We do, and that's why I didn't know you want, if you wanted one more time to just deal with the fire, I know that there was, they actually does that a little bit with the curving, I didn't know if you wanted one more time to look at some of those other minor things and then send it out. However, but it's fine, but it, it's probably gonna be December.
It takes time, clearly.
It's gonna, when you're looking at noise, traffic, stormwater, their schedule, so.
That's, that's, I listen, well, I don't have any tenants.
Yeah.
We want to do the right thing, we want to get, we're here to stay, right? It's not a whole heck of a lot is going on in our industry right now, so if it's, if it's better for you folks that we wait till the, whatever the second week of January is.
No, we, we do the first week, the first.
Oh, you do.
The second week, excuse me, the second week, I'm sorry. Don't wait, give me the second Thursday of Jan, of January. I will tell you this, you'll be first on the agenda.
Sold.
Appreciate that. And we'll work behind the scenes with the butters, we'll work with the fire chief, and we'll try to, we understand that you're gonna have some comments too.
Right.
Um, and some of the things that were brought up in terms of what the project's gonna look like for Maple Street screening.
It's still inch.
It, it is on the plans, so, you know, if next time we could have a productive discussion about those elements, we're all ears, if we want to work with you.
Absolutely.
But it is on the plans, so.
You might want to take some pictures of the, uh, entrance as it is now, and I think you saw somebody come in with here's what it looks like now, here's what we're composing later.
Have plenty.
Especially if you're gonna try to, try to
So.
Go through a rock in scenic road and all, take a picture.
Absolutely.
For a little context, I actually delayed moving forward, we could have been on some of the engineering on the traffic side because I waited patiently for Sean who worked for Van Ness and did all of Campanelli stuff, all the stuff with C Free with Victory, giving, did the work for Howland and Marcus like the road, he knew the quarter like the back of his hand, and it was so, he switched and he went over to chapel engineering, and so he switched and he got buried with stuff, I waited like three months to hire them because I wanted him to do the traffic engineering because he knew, he had done everything on the road and knew it really well, right, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we tried to, even though it's the first time you guys have seen us, we tried to figure out exactly where we needed to be sensitive for everybody, both you and the.
For a first-time presentation, we're very. And we shout the neighbors, they've been very impressive. And to the neighbors that are here, um, at home and, uh, in the audience, thank you very much, it's been a very long night.
Thank you for standing.
To the applicant, thank you very much.
Can we get, so are we thinking we're gonna do the, this, we're gonna do the eleventh of January or are we thinking the twenty-fifth?
I'm thinking, I think we can get them by eleven.
Oh, I absolutely do, so we need a motion for January.
These motions continue.
Okay, at seven o'clock.
At seven.
January eleventh.
Not only seven o'clock.
They're gonna be on the agenda.
Really important.
Yes.
Thank you very, very much.
You can sign this. Just so I have that done, okay, perfect, thank you.
You need both.
Fifty-nine thousand, fifty-nine.
Yeah, I was looking at that and there was like.
So here's to an A and R.
Yeah.
So come on up, A and R, then we're done, one more thing, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it, all right.
Both are passed four to.
Yes. Yeah, that's that, thank you.
Oh, one more A and R.
Oh, my, all right.
I can promise you, we may not be done today. First thing in the morning.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, boy, all right, you have the A and R application in your packet.
Correct.
So for the old farmhouse, that was the original, um, family house, I don't know, the, uh, on Gave Brook, um, the little farmhouse, we sold it to one of our workers, it's gonna be worth four thousand, we cut out a forty thousand eight hundred square foot with a hundred fifty foot front range. It's somewhere that we're gonna cut a separate driveway out remotely, excuse me, for.
So it's gonna, it's gonna remain a single-family home?
Yes.
So I'll move to the A and R.
Yes.
No, it's second.
That was second.
I need to stand, I don't think anybody.
And, uh.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Nick, I.
So we're gonna get it done in a day.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
From August tenth.
Yes, from August tenth. Okay.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, all right. Good morning, Bill.